Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Barry. Councilmember Clay. Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Sniffer.
Here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
And if I can just note that Councilmember Clay is still out of town and will not be here this evening. Are there any council comments? Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Bruce. First, I just wanted to follow up on some of the items I brought up that I think we need to add or put additional focus on in this upcoming 2009 budget. I spent all the time thinking about it and have come up with some more specifics that I just wanted to mention and potential ways that I think we can pay for these things. Again, I would say that I don't think we should increase the overall amount of the 2009 budget that the city manager has proposed, but try and figure out a way to pay for additions that we want within that overall dollar framework. I put these forward as items to discuss with my colleagues, both on the things I think we should do and the ways we should pay for it. So first is around environmental. I think we do need a full-time city staff person that will focus on climate change and green initiatives for the city of Tacoma Park. Gaethersburg has done this to a great deal of success and I think we should emulate or replicate that model. The next is I think we should really look at purchasing additional electricity generated by wind power. Maybe we can't go to 100% by 2009, but maybe we can make a goal of 25% or 50%. And lastly, I think we need to start a fluorescent light bulb cooperative purchasing program. The second area I mentioned was safety. After listening to the chief last week and asking him specifically if he needed anything additional and him telling us that he felt like he has everything he needs to make the city safe at this point, although he may come back to us in the future if he has additional needs, I don't think we need to do anything additional in the budget on that front. Around economic development, I have a number of proposals. I think we need to add actually to our full-time staff in the community development and housing development department and have someone dedicated to economic development. I would advocate that we need a design sharet for the parking lot next to the fire station in the surrounding junction area so that in two years when this fire station is done, we'll know as a community what we want to do in that area and be able to move forward quickly and engaging potential people who might want to buy or develop the lot. And hopefully by that time we'll also have figured out a way that everyone agrees with in the community to address the issues related to the junction around pedestrian and traffic issues. I would propose that we have grant funds put forward to be used for build-out to attract businesses to particular areas in Tacoma Park. In particular, for my ward, I think that those grants should be tied to the community legacy loan fund money that we received. But I wouldn't say that it should only be for the ward one. There are other areas in Tacoma Park that need help attracting businesses. And then lastly, I think we need to put forward a grant or some help to Historic Tacoma to help them refurbishing the new building that they have at the junction. They've done a lot of fundraising already and put a lot of effort forward and the city's helping a little bit this year, but I think we can help a little bit more next year or should at least consider it. And then the last item, which is separate from those main three initiatives of the environment, safety, and economic development, is that I think we need to figure out the back of the community center, particularly for the residents that live in Hodges Heights. And I don't think this is an expensive solution. Actually, to quote one of my constituents, he's talking about a visual barrier that could be provided perhaps by a low burn, planted shrubs and trees. This would not have to be something elaborate or expensive. We don't need a famous architect to come in and design it. Just something that helps screen the view a little bit and provide a nicer end to Grant Avenue. And perhaps this could be part of the stormwater management project, considering how much stormwater runs down the hill there. Some potential ways to pay for this. And so some of these things may not be popular, but I think we have to make choices about what we are going to do and probably the harder thing is what we're not going to do. So I would take a look at the following things. I'm not sure that we shouldn't fund them, but potential things I'd want to have the city manager comment on eventually, not necessarily tonight, as possible sources of funds. One, I would not, instead of funding $10,000 for public art, I would use that money for the initiatives I mentioned above. The $60,000 in the budget for a community-wide strategic planning process, I think, could be put to better use. $30,000 for the green roof deck. Now, I'm in favor in general of having a green roof deck, but I'm a little bit troubled by the idea that we wouldn't first hire someone who would help us with all our green initiatives and figure out if that's the highest priority and the best use of the money. $20,000 for gateway signage. I think we made great strides in improving the signage around the city this year. I'd want to know maybe if there's specifics on what this $20,000 would be spent on, but I'm not so sure that would be my highest priority for the coming year. Instead, I would fund the other things mentioned. There's an $8,500 subsidy that goes to the Tacoma Park Survival Guide. And I want to be very clear, I'm a big fan of Survival Guide. I think the city should make sure it continues to get produced. But one thing about how it gets produced is basically that's a subsidy that gets passed on in some form, in some dollar amounts, to the organization that helps to produce the Survival Guide, the cooperative daycare center here in Tacoma Park. So I think we should just, if we're giving subsidies to organizations, we should just be critical and think about that. That's one I think we should contemplate. I would also contemplate slight increases in library fines. I'd like to see an improvement in the money that the rec department reclaims for the services it provides. I would target maybe trying to get that up to a 25% of self-funding. Right now, the current rec budget is 1.34 million. 25% of that would be $336,000, which is about an 80% increase in fees from what they get now. So those are just my thoughts and ideas related to the budget. I hope that sparks some thought with my council colleagues. I know in the coming days and weeks soon, they'll probably also propose ideas and I look forward to those discussions with them about what's the most important thing for us to be investing in for our city. Thank you for listening to that lengthy, those lengthy points. I do have some questions around the Tacoma Junction, some comments and questions. So I understand that there's a, Barb, that there's a meeting with SHA today, or not today, but this week, and I just wanted to understand a little bit more about the nature of that meeting and what's going to be asked of SHA and if you feel like you have clear direction from the council on what we want related to the junction or if that's even going to be a topic to be discussed.
Sure. As the council is aware, I sent a letter to SHA as a follow-up to receiving the feasibility study. Specifically what that letter indicated is that we wanted SHA to, this is a quote from the letter, "Develop a public improvement process to address the concerns of local stakeholders and to solicit additional comments or ideas for improvement." So that's basically the nature of the meeting, is to really talk about what SHA's typical public participation process is, how that might work. I think from the staff's perspective, our focus is on how we address the traffic concerns and the pedestrian safety concerns in that area besides the roundabout, if there's other options that could be considered and how that might all work out. So it's very much of an initial discussion with the SHA staff about how we move forward.
So then we will be seeking with them to broaden beyond, because what we asked for so far was just to really have them look at traffic circles. My fear there is that you have a nail. And we asked a department that just looks at traffic circles too.
Right.
You have a nail, then everything, you know, the solution looks like a hammer for that nail. So I just, so are we going to specifically ask them to broaden the potential solutions?
You know, as you may not know, any state agency is fairly large, so I'm not sure if the folks we are meeting with this week are necessarily the ones who would study other options, but I think that's something the staff would certainly suggest that we explore and find out how that might work.
Okay.
I think from the staff's perspective, and I believe the council, and the council can correct me if I'm wrong, the focus is on how we address the problem, not necessarily the mechanism that we use to get there.
I totally agree with that. I think the problems are pedestrian safety and traffic, and I don't think we should jump quickly to a solution. We should look at a wide range of options and then have healthy debate about it. I do get a little bit worried about public processes because sometimes public processes can start to take on a life of their own, so I would be concerned about that. Would it be possible for you to brief the council as a group publicly when, after that meeting, maybe in the next week or two? Because I know that a number of people out in the community are concerned about this issue and they might want to hear about it as well.
Certainly with the mayor's concurrence, I can certainly address this next week during my report.
Great.
That'll be okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would just like to compliment Councilmember Wright on his list of important initiatives that we should look at during the budget cycle. And I trust that Mayor Williams will give us ample time to talk about those and also the items that Councilmember Wright and others are going to suggest for saving money. Because I think in today's world, with the economy the way it is and the fuel prices and other prices rising, we need to look for a lot of ways to save money. It isn't just, you know, Tacoma Park budget that is affecting our residents, and so we need to do our share at trying to hold our tax rate down so that people can continue to live and be healthy in this community. And speaking of health, I just wanted to give a little update on Pat Lovelace and his health. As you recall, several, a couple of months ago, he had heart surgery. This is a gentleman that comes to our council meetings very regularly. He's blind and has many other health problems. He had bypass surgery. He's recovering well from that, but last week he fell down and one of his first trips out of his apartment, he fell down on his way back and ended up with a couple of compacted vertebrae. And so he's recovering from that. And he wanted me to give you his apologies for not being able to come here more regularly like he always did in the past. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
I also commend Councilman Wright for coming up with a list of things to consider and as he suggests, I think, I hope we'll all come up with the lists that we can discuss. Without going into my own list, I'll just put out a couple of long-term visions that I think that, I hope that we all share, and that is financial sustainability and reduction of our carbon footprint, which people here are probably getting tired of me coming back to all the time. I read an article in The Post last week about pensions and how tough they're going to be in the future to maintain. So I think I want to make sure that in this budget and in future discussions, we look at that and see to what extent our pension plans are sustainable into the future, because there were some pretty dire predictions in that Post article and the article pointed specifically and directly to state and local governments. I'm going off to the ICLI conference, and don't ask me to define what ICLI means or stands for, because I can't quite remember. Maybe someone else can remember.
Mayor Williams will get that, please.
I'll bet Mayor Williams can remember this.
International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives.
There we go. The International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives. I'm going to that in Albuquerque on Wednesday, and I'll be there Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And I hope to come back with some long-term ideas so that we can reduce our carbon footprint over in this budget cycle and in future ones. Thank you.
I've got a couple of quick items. First one, I wanted to just note the progress that we made end of last week after our discussion here on Thursday night at the Budget Work Session about last-ditch effort to try and get the Piney Branch Pool reopened. A number of us met on Friday with a couple of our county council members and were successful in putting together a proposal which went forward to the county council. This is the end of their budget cycle, and we're hopeful that the county council will see fit to go with the plan that we put forward in conjunction with a couple county council members or in some modified version if they have to do that. It would essentially try and get the pool refurbished and provide operating funds from the county for a 10-month period, starting September and running through the end of next school year through June, and partner with Adventist Community Services to operate the pool and partner with the city and Montgomery County Public Schools to provide some funding to make it operational. And we'll see where that goes. We should know more in a couple of days. The second item, if I can just ask the city manager if we can step up our efforts with State Highway Administration to get some attention from them, particularly I've noticed on Carroll Avenue. I'm sure there are some other areas as well, but there are some pretty enormous potholes that have been there for some time and are getting bigger. And with all this rain, they're pretty well hidden, filled with water, and there are some real axle breakers there. And my understanding is that so far, our efforts have met with a response from them that, oh, they'll get WSSC, which is working on the street to deal with that. This is not a WSSC construction issue. It is a state highway maintenance issue, and I think we need to really step up our efforts to make sure that we can get their attention, get them in here to do what they need to do on their highway that they're responsible for, or their highways that they're responsible for. And then I just wanted to note a couple of budget items. I think somebody is here from CASA who's going to speak at Public Comment about a request that they have with a budget request. We also had a request last week, which I put at your places last week but then forgot to mention, which is from the Tacoma Foundation. And they have a request for some matching money. And as with Councilmember Wright, they have some suggestions about not increasing the amount of the budget that the city manager has put forward, but to reconfigure some things. So I think we need to throw that in the hopper with other requests that are kind of coming in externally and the Tacoma Foundation. And that had to do with some various projects. If you need to, I can resend that information as long as we get that on the list to consider. And the final thing I wanted to mention was an email that I got today that I forwarded to the council this afternoon from State Delegate Al Carr and his request to the county council pertaining to the energy tax, which we, the city, pay on our streetlights and wanting to get the county to change how they do that so that municipalities would be exempt from paying that energy tax on the streetlights. And I commend him for that effort. And my sense was that if the county council doesn't change that this year, he'll be introducing legislation next year in Annapolis to force them to make that change, which would be And that's all I have this evening. Anything else? Okay. Then we will move on to adoption of minutes. Would anybody like to move adoption of minutes for March 24th, April 7th, and April 14th?
Move.
Three or four seconds. I think that was moved by Councilmember Robinson and seconded by Councilmember Barry. All those in favor? You say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. As far as, there are no additional agenda items for this evening. Just a general note on upcoming agendas that, of course, we're going to be spending most of our time this month, the month of May, on the budget, and we're scheduled to adopt the budget in early June. And the other thing that you'll notice on the upcoming agenda is that we have a number of sessions interviewing people for the Washington Adventist Hospital site committee. The next item is Public Comment. Anybody wishing to make any comments, please come up to the microphone, identify yourself, and please try and hold your comments to three minutes. And as opposed to the last couple of weeks where the buzzer kind of died on us, I think we have a new or revitalized rejuvenated buzzer and hopefully.
Is that the air horn?
We'll go there if this one doesn't work. But hopefully, people will know with a three-minute buzzer. So, welcome.
Hi. My name is Hank Prensky from 7921 Sligo Creek Parkway, and I come bearing gifts. The council will remember about a month ago or just prior to Earth Day, I brought this issue to our attention about the tremendous waste and wanton energy consumption of production of single-serving water bottles. And the council, in its wisdom, voted unanimously to not purchase single-serving water bottles, something that used to be up there on the dais. But I had promised to, and consulted with the city attorney about the limits of providing gifts to elected officials, and we are well within our limit of $25 per item per council member. So I will present to each one of you the Corporate Accountability International Think Outside the Bottle, challenging corporate control of water worldwide, an aluminum bottle that is not lined with plastic and BPA chemicals that'll kill us all, is infinitely reusable. And I have individual bottles for each of the members of the council. And since it's a very public display of how and when you drink your water, I also have a gift for the city clerk and the city manager. And so that made up nine, and I bought 10 of them. I'm not going to keep one for myself. But given the concern that was raised at our discussion by the chief of police about the need to have water available for the Tacoma Park's finest during events such as the Fourth of July Parade, I thought I would present the 10th bottle to the chief so he too can be a role model for his officers. So without any much further ado, I will point out that we are in some reasonably good company. The cities of Boston, Seattle, Minneapolis, San Francisco have also ceased purchasing single-serve water bottles. And St. Louis is about to save $20,000 a year in their contracts to purchase that kind of water. There is additional campaigns from Corporate Accountability International to encourage restaurants to stop serving bottled water in that regard and to serve tap water as well. And I would recommend anybody in the city who's interested in this item, in this topic, to go to the website of Corporate Accountability International for this campaign, very succinctly described as www.thinkoutsidethebottle.org. And now your gifts.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure. When's the last time somebody gave gifts in public? In public?
Thank you.
And if you can see the green guess one? And one for the chief, please.
It's just rinse them with plastic. Thanks again. Is there any other couple of comment?
I don't really, is this on, I don't really want to follow that. I don't have a gift. My name is Jenny Friedman. I'm the Development Director at CASA of Maryland, and thanks very much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. As Mayor Williams shared with you, we've submitted a request to the city of Tacoma Park for funding for next year in your FY09 budget. But before I speak about that, I would like to thank the city for its past support. As I'm sure all of you know, we have been operating a temporary day labor site on New Hampshire Avenue for the past six years, and we're very, very pleased to share with you that it will no longer be a temporary site. And we have been working very, very hard with Prince George's County to open up a permanent site on the intersection of New Hampshire Avenue and University Boulevard. It's a 6,000-square-foot facility. We'll have a vocational training lab inside. As you know, that intersection is the largest unofficial hiring site for day laborers in the nation, actually. And we're very excited to be working with the city and with the county to open that site. We are scheduled to open in October at this point. And we are submitting a request to the city, and we hope that you'll consider continuing to fund CASA's work with the low-wage worker community, especially the city of Tacoma Park residents, and there are very many of them, that currently use the temporary site and that will be using the new site on New Hampshire Avenue and University Boulevard. We have, the new site will have vocational training, as I said. It will have ESOL classes, financial literacy work in partnership with Bank of America, actually, who has a branch right next door, and obviously employment placement training and leadership development with the workers there. We're anticipating about 300 workers daily. We have been fundraising for this publicly and privately, or from public and private sources. We do have some private funding committed already, which we're really excited about. But it does have a budget for the next fiscal year of around $412,000. And we are respectfully requesting $55,000 from the city of Tacoma Park, which would specifically support worker outreach efforts, bringing the workers that are currently using the temporary site on New Hampshire Avenue, just those few feet down the road to the new site, and continuing to work with the workers to increase worker buy-in, to make sure that they are engaged in developing the rules of the center, the regulations, the salary scale, and that they feel that it is their own center, which, as we have learned, is the key to making sure that the center is a success. So that's a little bit about the request, which I understand you all have in front of you, and we'd be glad to come back at a future date if you'd like and talk in more detail about it with more people from my team. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Councilmember Wright, did you just want to make a quick comment on that?
I consulted with the city attorney, because my wife works for CASA, and by the city charter and code, it's pretty clear that I have to accuse myself from any debate or discussion about the topic as well as any vote on that specific topic. The city attorney is looking into, and the Ethics Commission will look into further whether that, if it ends up in the budget, whether that means I can't vote on the entire budget. My sense is that the, that the, really, what would be the word here? Not the desire, but the meaning of the code would not exclude me from voting on the whole budget, but just because this one item is in the budget, but that is to be further reviewed by the city attorney and the Ethics Commission.
If that item is in the budget.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My name's Sabrina Barron. I'm the president of Historic Tacoma. Glad to hear Councilmember Wright talking this evening about the direction that consideration of improvements to intersections in Tacoma Junction can go. Historic Tacoma remains convinced that traffic circles are not the solution, and in fact, traffic circles should be taken off the table in our perspective. To that end, I'd like to share with all of you this evening a copy of a letter that Historic Tacoma is sending to SHA and several other copied recipients, talking about the problems from a preservation perspective with the traffic circle proposal. And there's very strong weight here. Historic preservation is backed up by law, by statute, in both Montgomery County and the state of Maryland. And in those laws and in those statutes, there's very strong provision about what may and may not happen in historic districts. Tacoma Junction is smack dab in the middle of a historic district, and therefore those laws and regulations apply to that situation. I've also attached to our letter a copy of a letter that was sent over, the signature of Jeff Fuller, who's currently the chairperson of the Montgomery County Historic Preservation Commission, to Mike Miederhauser at State Highways, also expressing the HPC's very strong concern that traffic circles are wrong for this particular neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to make any? Is there anybody else who wishes to make any comments? Okay. Then the next item on the agenda is the city manager's comments.
I'll be very brief since we're running a little bit behind schedule. I did want to share with the council that obviously the last 24 hours have been a fairly busy one in the community with very heavy rainfall. I think as I indicated in an email I sent the council earlier, we've had a number of downed trees in the community. We've also, in certain areas of the city, also experienced some problems with some of the storm drains becoming clogged. There's a number of areas across the city that unfortunately have experienced problems, including sewer backups in some areas. We're still trying to figure out the extent to which it's a private problem or a public sewer problem. So we'll keep the council apprised as we learn a little bit more about those situations. Wanted to mention to the council that the budget agenda packets for Thursday night are in your mailboxes upstairs. If you could please pick those up before you leave this evening. I read the same article that Councilmember Robinson referred to regarding governmental pensions, and I will put a copy of that article in your mailboxes. It is interesting reading. We've had some brief discussion during this budget process about the situation with our police pension plan. Councilmember Robinson, I know you'll be out of town at the ICLI conference on Thursday when we'll be talking about the non-departmental budget. But one of the items that the council may note as you read through that agenda item is that there is a shortfall in the civilian pension plan. It's a special contribution that we make to the state system, and we can talk about that a little bit more Thursday night. But that was something that the city is amortizing over a period of time. So Councilmember Robinson, when you get back into town, if you'd like to talk about that further, I'd be happy to do so. One thing I would encourage the council, just as you kind of think through what your service priorities are for the community and how you go about, would like to fund those, is think about them in terms of which items are kind of one-time expenditures and which would be ongoing. My cautionary tale to the council, as I would give any elected body, is that adding staff or other ongoing expenses and trying to pay for them with essentially money that was geared towards one-time expenditures is probably not the most fiscally prudent thing to do from my perspective. So as you think about adding any type of ongoing cost, I encourage you to look at the proposed budget in terms of where you would cut ongoing expenditures. Otherwise, I think it starts becoming, putting us on the wrong path from a financial stability standpoint. So with that, I'll conclude my report unless there's questions from the council about any of these items.
The sewer backup you mentioned was storm? Sewer, sanitary sewer?
One is, I can just mention this very quickly. We had a problem in the 1100 block of Larch. The information that was given to me by staff is there's a private drain in the yard that's overflowing into the basement. We're unsure exactly whether the problem's in the private part of the system or in the public. But we did send someone out to basically examine whether or not any public part of the system is clogged or problems on private property. So that actually did involve kind of sewage backing up into a home, it appears, or at least stormwater backing up into the basement. We also had problems in the 200 block of Spring and the 400 block of Boston. Those areas have had some ongoing problems with storm and sewer connections, so those are still under investigation.
Okay. Thanks. And with your indulgence, I think I'd like to just very quickly flip Agenda Item Number Three up before the presentations because I see the interviewee for the Emergency Preparedness Committee has been here since the beginning, and we can do that pretty quickly if you'd like to do that, then you don't have to stay here if you don't want for close to an hour of presentations. So if Robert Wiedemeyer would like to come to the table, we'll just do that real quick. Welcome. And if you can just tell us about your interest and background for the Emergency Preparedness Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I have spent the last 30 years with guard and reserve doing disaster preparedness work. I ended up my last 10 years as a disaster preparedness superintendent at Elmendorf Air Force Base. So I've got a background in not only disaster preparedness, but also nuclear biologic and chemical contamination issues and have received training that supports that. As I had mentioned a little bit earlier, since 97 when I retired, so it's been a few years, I would certainly get myself updated. But I think that I can offer the community the experience that I have in emergency preparedness and emergency planning, and particularly in tabletop exercises and actually field exercises. What I've always been amazed with in emergency work is when you get everybody in the same room and you run the plans that have been on the shelf, that you have dusted them off, and you find out that, gosh, they look good on paper, but they don't work when you get the bodies and the chemistry together to do it. So working and doing tabletops and actually going through the scenarios is extremely helpful and then adjusting your plans afterwards.
Thanks for your interest. Your background is really wonderful in this area. Any questions or comments?
I sometimes think it's a prior life, but that's okay, too.
Thanks, Bob, for stepping in.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate it. And now we'll go back to Agenda Item One, which is the auditor's briefing on the new risk assessment standards. Who's going to introduce that?
Good evening.
Welcome back.
It's that wonderful time of the year again. This is absolutely amazing. Normally, when it's announced the auditor to go to presentation, we're in members. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm here this evening to talk about the new risk assessment standards and how we're going to conduct the audit this year. With me this evening is Eris Coleman, the manager with our firm. Eris has been on this audit for a number of years now and is very familiar with the city. She will once again be running the day-to-day fieldwork and operations of the audit. To my right and to your left is Greg Bussing. Greg is the senior manager in our Calverton office. He was nominated for partner on June 1st of last year, and in 19 days will become a partner in the firm. Greg will be working with me on the audit. We always assign two partners to every audit, and Greg will be working with me on this one this year. So I figured while we had the opportunity, I'd bring him and introduce him to you all this evening.
And if, just for those people who don't know, if you can introduce yourself as well?
I was going to get to that. My name is Steve Novak. I am a partner with Clifton Henderson. The new audit standards, what we refer to affectionately as the risk assessment standards, were promulgated about a year ago by the AICPA in response to trying to bring all the different types of audit standards that were out there together. Herefore, the standards that were followed for publicly traded companies were slightly different than those followed for governmental entities in the way the audits were performed. The end results were still the same, however, the approach was somewhat different. We have always used a risk-based approach to our audits. However, the new audit standards have required us to do some things a little bit differently, primarily in the way we document our work and get to where we're getting to. What we basically have to do at this point in time is identify major risks, identify those controls that exist to mitigate those risks, and tie the testing that we do specifically to those risks. So it's a much more process-based approach than we've done in the past. To that end, the process consists, the new part of the process consists of a couple different ways of doing things. One is, we are giving, or have given, a number of questionnaires to staff to complete. Basically, those questionnaires are designed to elicit responses with regard to risks and controls as they relate to governmental entities in the areas that are considered to be of major risk to governmental entities. They are designed specifically for governments. We will take those questionnaires and that information that we get from staff, and we will marry that up with what we have determined to be risks at city of Tacoma Park, based on our experience with the city, based on our experience with governmental entities, and based on what we know is going on out there in public, based on new audit standards, new governmental accounting standards, that whole field of knowledge. We will then determine whether you have the controls in place to mitigate those risks. If not, that will dictate to us a different path of testing in those areas. We may end up testing some new areas this year that we haven't tested in the past. We may find that certain areas, we might have been doing a little too much testing. Other areas, we may decide to increase the testing. But it is a different type of approach. We plan on doing our audit, the preliminary work during the weeks of May 19th and May 26th, so it's coming up quickly. And then our final field work will be performed during September 2008. During our preliminary field work and at final field work, we are going to follow up on the comments that we maintained last year with regard to areas of improvement. We will look at that during our preliminary, and then we will also be wary of it during our final field work to make sure that all the items that need to be taken care of have been taken care of. To the extent that they're not, we will re-report to you once again that either they have been taken care of or they need additional attention. One of the other things that we have to do under the new risk assessment standards or the new audit standards is make certain communications with, quote unquote, "those charged with governance" prior to starting our field work. Those communications, which I have a written copy for each member of council, outline what we do. If you recall, at the end of the audit process last year, I went through a letter that said, "This is our responsibility. This is what we are doing." This letter outlines that upfront, but also throws some additional information in, such as the planned scope and timing of our audit, which I have communicated to you. Also, it defines the term materiality, because what we're doing is we're giving you an opinion that your financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. Now, materiality is an interesting concept. A lot of people look at it and say, "It's a dollar amount. If, you know, if we're off by more than this, it's a material amount." But materiality can also have qualitative aspects to it as well. In a governmental entity, the difference between restricted fund balance and unrestricted fund balance, while it may not be material in dollar, could be material from a qualitative standpoint because it could sway someone's opinion of the city or some decision-making that happens at the city. So when we are looking at materiality, we're looking at two different pieces. We're looking at dollar amount. We're also looking at qualitatively, is it an issue that we should be dealing with? The letter also outlines some other items that you may want to discuss with us, either privately or publicly, about the audit, such as who should we be communicating with during the audit process from the council's standpoint? If we have anything to communicate, should it be coming to the entire council? Would you like this going to one representative? You know, how exactly would you like us to do that? If you become aware of any issues, we would like for you to communicate to us when you become aware of those issues so that we could respond to them at that point in time. If you become aware of any regulatory issues, we would also like to be aware of that. Because while we're planning our audit and performing our audit, if something comes up that you're aware of, we may not always become aware of those issues. And so in order for us to really do an effective audit, we have to have two-way communication, both from us to you and you to us. That's basically all I wanted to go over this evening. If anyone has any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
That's very helpful. If you have any questions, Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you. I just had one question. You mentioned the letter. When will you be expecting response to that?
Anytime you'd like. I mean, I don't need a response. If you have any issues or if you'd like to discuss any issues with me, you can certainly give me a call. This letter is just informative to you and to give you certain things to think about. And if after you've thought about, you have any issues or anything you'd like to discuss with us, feel free to contact me. And Ms. Matthews has my contact information.
Okay. I would just like to encourage the council, we do have a point of contact to keep the communications between the council and the auditor, since you do work at our pleasure.
That's great.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Snipper?
Yes, just a quick question. I was trying to take notes on the scheduling. Could you go over again how the schedule works? You said you're going to do the preliminary field work in May 19th to May 26th.
Well, we will be here two weeks, the week of May 19th and the week of May 26th.
Oh, the whole week?
Yes. We will be here two weeks. If we get done sooner, of course, we will be leaving sooner. But our experience tells us it'll take about two weeks. I'm sorry.
And then the fee goes down if it goes down.
Unfortunately, with this new process that we're undergoing.
It goes up.
Well, it takes, it does take longer. The best way to think about the difference between the two processes, we all know how to start a car. Imagine having to write a book about how to start a car before you started the car. That's what we're talking about. Okay? That's the difference in what we're doing. And by writing the book, we may find a more efficient way to start the car, or we may find other things that we want to do while we're starting the car.
And the AICPA thinks this is a good idea.
There is a huge convergence of audit standards going on at this point in time, not just within the United States, but also internationally. Right now, within the United States, you have what's called generally accepted accounting principles. You also have generally accepted audit standards. There are also international accounting standards and international audit standards. And there is work right now to converge them. There's also audit and accounting standards for the UN, which are also coming into play. All these groups are coming to the table at the same time, including the Office of Management and Budget and GAO. And so probably within my career, hopefully towards the end of it, we'll see all this stuff come together and have to deal with it. But this is kind of the first step.
Have you done one of these new ones already?
Oh, yes. Yeah. Governmental entities in the state of Maryland are lucky because we've had to implement this for corporate clients already. We have been working on this for over a year. We've done dry runs. We've taken clients, quite frankly, where we've done the audits already and then gone back and redone them under the new standards, just to see what the effect would be, to get a gauge on how long it was going to take, and also to determine whether things are working. This is a work in process. And we've already found some things that work well and some things that need more refining.
This is auditing for dummies. You have to boil it down for me. As I read this, then, the old way, where you just got in and started the car, you came and looked and determined whether the books looked right.
Somewhat.
Something like that.
It was a lot more detailed than that.
Sure. Again, this is auditing for dummies, right? The new way, you see that the books look right, and then you say, but there may be a risk that they're not done right.
That's right.
And then you go down that kind of path.
Yeah.
So I think I understand where it's headed.
One thing, we have always looked at the risks. The difference between the two approaches is the amount of documentation and the type of documentation we have to do.
Okay.
Under the old standards, if you were a small organization with no segregation of duties, okay, no internal controls at all, and I knew that walking in, I could see it, I didn't have to worry about your internal controls. Under the new standards, I still have to document the fact that you don't have any internal controls. And I have to. internal controls and I have to document how I got to that determination. We're also looking at a different level of control now, being the entity level of control. In the past, we were concerned primarily with the account level of control or the financial statement line level. Now we're taking on different aspects of control as well, and so it's a lot more detailed process. We won't be giving an opinion on your internal control because that's not what the audit is designed to, but we will use it to aid in determining the testing that we need to do and we will make you aware of issues that come up and make you aware of internal control weaknesses as we see them, as we have in the past.
And if the bill, and when you just got in and turned the car, was $50, what's typically the bill now that you have to write the manual in order to know how to start the car?
When we submitted our fee proposal the last time that you went out the bid, we knew this was coming. It has already been factored into the fee that had been approved when we were hired, I believe, last year.
And so the difference, if it was 50, five years ago it was 50 and now it's 150?
You know, quite frankly, I can't, I can't give you an answer to that on this particular audit.
Typically, you're not willing to venture, kind of how much extra?
Typically, it's been running about 20 to 25% different.
Okay.
In the amount of man-hours it took to take.
Okay.
However, the one thing I will tell you is when we bid on this the last time, it had been a number of years and wage inflation and things like that had crept up, so it was very hard to, it would be very hard for me to pull that piece out because we had had a prior relationship with the city and we already had good knowledge of the city, which helps out quite a bit. If I was coming in and doing this from scratch, not knowing the city whatsoever, quite frankly, my fee might have been higher, probably would have been.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one quick question. We received a blue briefing sheet. I don't know if you've got a copy of it. I assume.
No, I did not.
The text of it probably came from you guys, it looks like. But it talks about the risk assessment process involves consideration of the following types of risk. Inherent risk and the risk that an error in the accounting and reporting process may occur. Control risk is the risk that internal control systems designed to prevent or detect errors may fail. Audit detection risk is the risk that audit procedures may fail to detect errors. In there, it all suggests that there are errors, you know, they happen accidentally or unintentionally. Is there also in there an assessment of the risk that individuals could knowingly or intentionally commit fraud or make fraudulent errors to their own benefit? Is that, is it just said in a nice way here in the sense that we're not saying, well, people could be cheating the system or trying to?
Our audits have always included a concept of fraud and we have always designed our audits to address issues with regard to fraud. Fraud being the misuse of an asset or the misreporting, if you will, of information that either decisions are based on or that, you know, to get additional funding for the city, for instance. If, for instance, someone was to misreport an expenditure as a grant expenditure instead of a regular expenditure of the city in order to get grant funding from the federal government, that would be fraudulent reporting. That doesn't mean that someone in the city has taken any money out of the city, but it would be a concept of fraud. Fraudulent financial reporting to show the city in better condition than it really is would be another type of fraud, as well as utilizing city assets for personal gain would be another consideration of fraud. We address that in a number of ways. One is we interview various people from throughout the city, both at management level. We sometimes contact council members to find out whether they know of anything and also rank and file in various departments to ask them, A, what do they feel the tone of management and those charged with governance is in the city as it relates to fraud? How are they made aware of issues as would be regarding fraud? And quite frankly, the last question is, do you know of any frauds that are occurring? And you'd be amazed at some of the answers we get. That's one way we address it. Another way we address it is we look at journal entries to look for unusual journal entries, to look for entries that occur after the end of the year that don't quite look right, that are rather large, to try to ferret out that type of reporting. We also, when we're doing the single audit, which is the audit of the federal funds, look to determine that the monies that are being spent and claimed for reimbursement from the federal government truly were used for those grant purposes. So we are looking at fraud, if you will, every step of the way. That, again, doesn't mean that we're doing a fraud audit because we're not. We're looking for material items and that's the way we base our task and our testing.
Thanks very much. I think that takes care of all the questions.
Thank you very much.
And you're going to leave copies of the letter with us?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And congratulations, Greg.
Yes. And we have now moved to the second presentation on our agenda, which is the briefing on the fire station construction.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Bruce Johnston. I am the Division Chief of the Division of Capital Development within Montgomery County's Department of Public Works and Transportation. To my right is Jim Stiles. He's our Construction Section Chief. And to my right is Kasa Seum. He is the project manager for this project and we're here tonight to give you a briefing on the current status of the project. You probably remember working with Mr. Hamid Omidwar, the design architect and chief of our Design Section on this project over the last number of years, as we worked with City Tacoma Park, elected officials and staff, worked with the Historic Commission on this project, Park and Planning Commission, and of course, members of your city. As you probably know, this is one of our very most complex projects. I was thinking, as your previous presenter talked about it, imagine writing a book on how to design and build a fire station in the City Tacoma Park on an existing fire station and having to move around a couple of citizens at the same time. It would be a very complex book. As you know, we had a very complex property acquisition process going on for many years. The design of the new facility had, a lot of people having input into that design. The logistics of the construction, including moving people around and moving the current fire facility and the people in there and keeping it as an operating station, are going to be very complex and all of the utilities involved for that are going to be very complex. We have bid the project and we have now awarded a construction contract and construction has started. The contractor is Milestone Construction and that's the same contractor that's doing our West Germantown Fire Station as well, and they're well along under that project, so they are very geared up for this project as well. We're building a 14,558 square foot facility on the location of the existing fire station and in order to build that, we're going to be moving the fire operations into a temporary facility. Right now, we have authorized work to proceed on the first three phases of the work. The demolition of 7135 Carroll Avenue is now complete. We are now working on the relocation of some utility lines and primarily we have to provide utility extensions into the new temporary facility before that project can get started. The grading work and we have completed an agreement with WSSC on the relocation of some of the utility lines. We will be then installing a temporary fire station on the lot leased by the City Tacoma Park and that, the planning for that fabrication is almost complete. All of that work in those first three phases is to be done by this fall, probably September of 2008. Then the next phase will be to move the fire station and all of its operations from the current building into the temporary building for the remainder of the construction of the project. After that's complete, we'll demolish the existing fire station and build the new fire station in its place. And finally, in the spring of 2010, we intend to move the fire personnel, the volunteers, back into the new fire station and then restore the temporary site to its current condition. As I mentioned, Milestone Construction is the contractor and the project cost, total million, total project cost is around 11 million, an actual construction project, the construction for this work is around $7 million. So that's where we are. It's a, we were very, very happy to move on into the construction phase and get this project under construction and we will look forward to getting it complete and opened up and turned back into service. And if you have any questions, we're all here to answer.
Let me just first say that you're not the only ones who are happy to see this finally going. A number of us have been working toward this for two decades.
Yes, it's been a long time.
And if I can just ask a couple of questions, was the temporary station redesigned since we last saw it? My sense was it shrunk a bit.
Not to my knowledge. I don't, I don't think so, not to my knowledge.
Can you just explain any coordination with State Highway Administration in terms of, I know that the new access for the public lot was put in and I didn't know how during the construction, there would be any further changes, temporary changes or permanent changes that are part and parcel of the project with SAG.
Kasa, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
We do have a permit from the state and basically the changes are not that major, mainly in transit and, you know, to my knowledge, there is no significant difference to what we have right now. It's just access to the temporary facility.
Okay.
So the entrance that's there now will basically be the same throughout the duration of the temporary facility?
Yes.
And so those, the existing, the old entrance to the lot, which will now be used by the fire and rescue equipment in the temporary station and the new temporary access into the lot will all be used, controlled the same way or the, will there be anything different about how the light, the current lights are used?
Signal traffic.
Yes.
As far as the signal, my understanding is that it's just mainly changing, you know, timing, you know, controlling without really moving any lights, but that's something that as we move, we will be working in detail with the state and with our traffic folks to have the detailed part of it.
So it'll be kind of adjusting on the fly, the override for the equipment coming into the intersection and the clearing of the intersection?
It has been planned. I, myself, I started on the construction end of it, but it's already planned. We do have a permit, you know, it's all, but as we go through sort of the process, which the city is also part of our team, we iron out any differences and things like that, but, you know, basically right now, don't have any major changes like, you know, bringing in, relocating lights and things like that. That's what I call a major change.
We do always have a new timing sequence if necessary, based on anticipated traffic volumes and changes in the work, but we always monitor it for a while and if there are changes necessary, depending on, you know, existing circumstances, then our traffic people are there to monitor it and tweak it as necessary.
Okay, just because I would say that our experience with the timing of the signalization in that intersection has been that we always try and come up with ways to tweak it and improve it and despite our best intentions, it always gets worse.
We'll keep an eye on it.
I would say that there are a lot of people who have concerns and opinions about how that signalization works there and it seems like everything that happens, people are ready to say, "Well, never mind the changes. Let's go back to the old way. This is worse."
Understood.
And my two senses, I think that whole thing would work a whole lot better with just the override for fire and rescue equipment and flashing red lights for everybody else. When the, when the, when the new access into the city lot went in and I guess maybe they cut a cable or something and all the lights were out for?
On red flash?
They were out completely.
So they were using it as a three-way stop?
Yes, and worked pretty well. And then I know that there have been some issues around the, one of the businesses that's between the existing fire station and the temporary and that there have been some difficulties with the contractor and exactly how that's going to work and my sense has been that the difficulties haven't necessarily been with the city or with the county, but with the contractor and I just wanted to make sure that those get worked through to make sure that that business remains viable during this two-year period.
We've met with them and we think we've come up with a workable solution for everybody, so we are, we're monitoring that too. As we speak now, I think we've come up with something that's going to work for everybody.
Great. Other questions or comments?
So the, just a quick question on the schedule. So the plan is to finish it by summer 2010?
Spring of 2010 is the time we're looking at.
As with any of these construction projects, and it sounds like this one's particularly complex, there's always the potential for delay.
Of course.
Could you talk a little bit about if you see, if you can give us any illumination on potential risk factors for delay that might come up or things you're concerned about related to sticking to that timeline?
Well, I'll start with weather. Since today we've got all the rain, you know, it's always a factor in doing, you know, this type of work, building, you know, a lot of work outside and so that's always a factor you can't really adjust for, you know, when the rain comes and how it fits into the construction schedule, so that's always one factor you always have to.
So there must be some, you put some fudge factor in for weather, but it could get worse or?
That's correct. We put the average rain lost days every month for rain into a contract, but if you have especially rainy month, then the contractor is entitled to days, you know, to be added to his contract and that results in overall delight to the project.
But we do require all of our contractors to provide at the beginning of the job, a critical path schedule to complete the work and we evaluate that monthly. They provide us updates monthly and so we track that and sometimes, yes, things happen and they do run behind. We require them that they provide a makeup schedule. Other kinds of risk factors in addition to the weather, most of the risk factors we're probably going to find are things that are underground, unforeseen conditions that they might run into. The demolition of the old building may be something that they uncover or encounter or other issues that they have underground. Once you get the building up and the foundations start coming out of the ground with it, your risk factors diminish considerably, but even then, you may have things like delivery of materials or subcontractors that walk off the job for whatever reason that happens. Those kinds of things, there are risk factors in that, yes.
The second thing I would have is more of a request and I think it's mainly to help you all avoid headaches in the long term, which is a request to have a project manager meet with the city representative, which I assume would be Darrell, and the immediate neighbors. There's a number of immediate neighbors who are very involved in the, in giving input to the design plan and in any of these things, sort of how it looks, the devil is really in the detail. So they have concern about, well, is what we agreed to actually in the final plan is going to look the way we agreed to it? So I think it would be helpful, maybe in the next month or a month and a half, to sit down with those residents in some evening and sort of just answer any questions, kind of have the plans there and go over that.
That's fine. That's something.
So that we don't end up at the end with people having different expectation and going in.
I think we have already started the process. Darrell here can attest to that, that we have already met a couple of times with city, you know, officials and we're part, and they are part of the team essentially. So we're using terms of, like she talked about, the auto shop, we worked with the city to resolve that, you know, problem and we believe right now we have a working condition, so. So we intend to do that. But as far as, I think, we mainly use, again, Darrell, as the interface between us and the community, because I think you know better than us just coming in. We don't have any problem meeting.
That's fine.
But just to let you know, we're already incorporated. We'll have quarterly, also kind of news, that we intend to disseminate information to the community, through the city, to update people where we are in terms of timing. We also have been actually working with WSC, bringing WSC to the team. And any work that's going on, you know, because our work and their work, whatever they have been doing as the street, sometimes intersects. So we're doing these things to make sure, but we are using the city as the main mechanism because of the knowledge that...
And we always find that, as you mentioned, the projects go much more smoothly when lines of communication with the stakeholders are open. And we will endeavor to do that. Good recommendation.
Great. So I'll work with Darrell to get the residents a time to meet with them. Two more questions. One is just the handicap issues, as if you're, there's a, the co-op on one side, and then there's further down the road, a senior citizens' tower. And so many people traverse that area, many of them with mobility issues. So I assume that the apron in front and the sidewalk transitions meet any ADA requirements that would exist?
It is intended to be.
Great.
Yes.
And then the last question is just, has anyone talked to you about putting a traffic circle right in front of your fire station?
No, I have not heard that.
Okay. Thanks.
We're, well, you know, Montgomery County has done a number of traffic circles, and we have pros and cons feelings about them as well.
Can I follow up on the pros and cons of the traffic circle? Because there's, you may have heard that we asked the State Highway Administration to look at a traffic circle in, not in front of the fire station, but just down the road at the junction. And they came back and said, well, here's how one could work. But they implied, or there was a comment kind of at the end, which stated that because of traffic backup concerns, that if we put a traffic circle at the junction itself, which is not in front of the fire station, but just down the road piece, there would need to be one in front of the fire station so that traffic wouldn't get clogged because of one light one place in the circle and another place. And so there's been a certain amount of consternation about that notion of putting a traffic circle right in front of the fire station. Have you ever seen a situation where there was a traffic circle in front of a fire station?
No, I have not seen that application. But I can understand the comment. When you have a traffic signal, you're developing queues and platoons of traffic.
Correct.
As they stop and then sequence. And with a roundabout, a traffic circle, you pretty much have free-flowing movement. So I can understand that that type of operation would be a conflict in such close proximity.
Right.
But no, I've not seen a traffic circle right outside a fire station. And I don't know how that would work.
The kind of gut response amongst the folks who are looking at it from the public are, hey, that wouldn't work. The fire station would never want to have a traffic circle in front. How could they get their engines out?
Well, you'd probably want to have a mountable circle where it could come out and go...
Go right over the circle.
And...
I see.
But you also need a certain amount of room right in front. And it's pretty tight quarters in that area.
Yeah. Well, this will all get worked out as we talk with State Highway Administration. But thanks for your comments.
You're welcome.
But you gave the right answers, as far as we're concerned.
Hey, we'll ask you guys.
Councilman Barry.
What will be the effect on the traffic there during the construction? And what steps have you taken to minimize the disruption?
Well, the traffic going in and out is primarily going to be construction traffic. And it's going to be large vehicles, maybe not in great quantities. What we typically find impacting traffic signals the most are changes in quantities of traffic volumes, not necessarily vehicles. I don't know if there's been any other anticipation or dealing with...
I mean, we dealt with State Highway on the actual temporary and what all that is. And they've coordinated, like I said, and we've got a permit for them to adjust it. So they have done the studies and agreed that we're not going to impact, I think, during construction, during the temporary state, using the temporary station.
Is there any sense of trying to move, I don't know, deliveries or that type of thing, kind of not in rush hour or anything like that?
Well, if we don't, if we had not written that in our contract, now it may be a little bit difficult to get that in. And I don't know that we have any special provisions like that in our contract at this point. Sometimes when we have a significant construction project that really has to be done in off-hours, we structure the contract around that. And the bids are based on overtime work and off-hour work. I don't think we've done anything like that in this contract. We could certainly make the suggestion to the contractor. But then again, he's dealing with subcontractors and suppliers that...
They may come to that conclusion themselves.
They very well may, yes.
Is there going to be anything posted, like WSC has their thing up by the project saying, you know, if you have any questions, here's the point of contact, that kind of thing?
Yes. A sign will be coming back. In fact, we're just approving the sign, so it should be posted, you know, so...
Okay.
It'll be a Montgomery County...
Montgomery County.
And it'll say, and it'll have some information so that if somebody has a question, they know where to call or who to contact, who to email or...
Exactly. Would have Montgomery County, the deputy number and your number.
And your cellphone and your home number and...
Has given out.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you all very much.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it. And we will now move to our regular meeting and move on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is Second Reading Ordinance Authorizing FY08 Budget Amendment Number Three.
In the interest of time, I'll just be brief. Council held the first reading of the budget amendment on April 28th. As noted on the cover sheet and on the ordinance itself, there have been certain changes since the first reading, basically two changes. One is the cost of the skid steer loader was increased because of a lower trade-in value for our existing equipment. The second change involves a community center fund. Expenditures would be increased by $30,000. And as the council is aware, there are still certain matters that are the subject of discussion between the city and both the contractors for Phase One and Phase Two that has resulted in additional architectural, legal, and other costs. One of those items is that we have agreed with James F. Knott to hire a fire protection consultant, sharing the cost of that service in an attempt to resolve certain issues that are a dispute between the parties. So if there's any questions about the changes to the budget amendment, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions and comments? Would somebody like to move the ordinance?
Move the item.
On the second?
Second.
I heard Councilmember Barry move it. Councilmember Snapper seconded. Are there any public comments on the second reading ordinance on the budget amendment? Any further council comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Let's see. It's a second reading ordinance, we need a roll call.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Darrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman.
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. The next item is our consent agenda. And I know that Councilmember Snapper has a request.
Yes, I'd like to move the, remove the single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of replacement portable radios.
Okay. So Agenda Item 5D comes off the consent agenda. Are there any other requests? Yes.
I just have a few questions related to the last item, which is the single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for stormwater infiltration system in Buffalo and Albany.
Okay. We'll take that one off as well.
Thank you.
Okay. So we now have our consent agenda minus Items D and G. All those in...
Move it?
That's right. I always forget that. I always want to move those things real, even quicker than we get.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Seaman, seconded by Councilmember Snapper. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You need a roll call though.
Oh, because...
You have...
Single reading. Sorry. We need a roll call though.
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper.
Aye.
Aye.
I just see that consent agenda, and I just want to move fast. We will now take up Agenda Item 5D, Single Reading Ordinance Authorizing Purchase of Replacement Portable Radios for the Police Department. Councilmember Snapper.
I wanted to see if you had any specific...
Yes?
I do.
Sure.
It's come to our attention that the Johnson, EF Johnson, is now making radios that meet the specifications that the city has for these portable radios. And they turn out to be a little cheaper as well. So I wondered if you'd consider doing a, I'd call it a test, basically. Because my view is, I'd like to see them tested by the police department before you actually sort of purchase a lot of them. So my suggestion here would be to buy all five or some fewer number of these Johnson radios. You've probably seen the information that was passed around about it. Or if you've not, I can get it to you.
I've not seen any specific information about it. We did receive a call out of the, kind of out of the blue, from a representative from EF Johnson, who purported that both the city of Gaithersburg and the city of Chevy Chase had purchased EF Johnson radios for use on the Montgomery County Megahead system. Upon receiving that information, I placed some phone calls into the Montgomery County radio managers and found that that was incorrect information, that the person who was making the allegations, every time a purchase surfaces by any of the governmental entities in Montgomery County, he makes contacts and makes assertions that the EF Johnson radios will work on the Motorola system that Montgomery County operates. Montgomery County steadfastly asserts that they won't allow any other radios but Motorola radios on their system. And that this person is providing false information to various governmental entities.
Well, that's good. I'm glad you checked on this.
Yes. We were particularly interested if it was less expensive.
Right.
We would definitely be interested in it.
Yeah.
But that's not the case.
Okay. So you feel confident that buying any other radio at this point would not serve the needs of the police department, both because Montgomery County wouldn't agree to let you use these radios and because they wouldn't actually meet the specifications?
That's the most important thing. We are operating on somebody else's radio system. Montgomery County's radio system, we're guests on their radio system. And they're asserting that only the Motorola radios will be allowed on that. And that if we were to even entertain another radio system, we would have to pay for all of the testing and so forth, evaluation of it.
Right.
And that would be fairly cost prohibitive, I believe. And we would also assume any liability if we, for instance, were to use equipment that would cause some sort of crash or disruption to their radio system.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Seaman?
Did you contact either of the two jurisdictions that were purportedly using Johnson radios?
Not directly. I spoke directly with Montgomery County Police Radio Managers, and they assured me that there were no non-Motorola radios being operated on their system.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? If you want to come up to the microphone.
How do you turn it on?
It should be on.
Say again?
It should be on.
Okay. Yeah, I'm Mike Keviner. I'm the guy who made the call. And it wasn't quite, is this the chief?
The deputy chief.
No.
No, okay. Sorry. No, the radios are not being used by Gaithersburg or Chevy Chase. That's correct. I was the radio vendor for like 12 or 14 years for Gaithersburg and a little lesser time for Chevy Chase. It is true that Montgomery County has resisted, blocked basically any other Johnson radios from coming onto their system. I attached to the email you got, my letter to Leggett, basically complaining about that. We're a local, small business, EF Johnson dealer, been in business for, you know, many, many years, 15 years. And the radios are licensed by Motorola to work on a Motorola system. And I knew your interest in getting nuclear-free and competition. For five radios, I don't want to start a war or anything like that. But I knew that you were sort of unusual in trying to foster competition. And I've had several people from the city contact me because they know I'm in the business. So I'm going to push the thing very hard with the county and try to, you know, get the radios. My radios are, the Johnson radios are on the Fairfax County contract. And they were tested, and Fairfax has the same system as Montgomery County. The thing that sort of emboldened me about contacting the county, if you read it, is the firefighter's death down in Prince William County. And they were using the Motorola XTS 5000 radios. Now, I don't think that caused his death, but they had huge radio, huge radio problems. And the radio you're buying is the same one that they had failures in, down in Prince William about this time last year. So anyway, I appreciate you bringing it up. And if you'd like to test or, you know, do anything further, I'm here in the county and would be glad to, or answer questions that any of you have.
Thanks very much. And good luck pursuing the issue with the county, because I...
Yeah, I will. I actually sued Montgomery County in '92 over the similar, same kind of thing. And so I guess I'm ready to take them on again here. So we'll see. But anyway, this timing just sort of came up, you know, the fact that you're buying, you know, buying some, I thought, and I tried not to blindside the chief. I actually called him, and he said he was going to call me back, and I never heard back from him, so.
And we all want to make sure that our officers have the best equipment that'll work best to help them and that we can do it as inexpensively as possible. So thanks. Any other questions? Any further public comment? Okay. So this is a single reading ordinance. So please call a roll on the ordinance authorizing purchase of replacement portable radios. What's that?
No.
Who wants to move it?
To move?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Barry, seconded by Councilmember Seaman. Now, we'll, of course, please call a roll. Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman.
Aye.
Councilmember Snapper.
No.
Councilmember Wright.
No.
Okay. That passes, four to two. Now we have Item...
Here.
Thank you. Item 5G, Single Reading Ordinance Authorizing Contract for Stormwater Project Buffalo and Albany Avenues. Councilmember Wright.
My main question just has to do with notification and discussion with the residents about the project. So is your sense that they know this is going to be going on? Any implications it's going to have for life there while the construction goes on? But also probably, more importantly, it's, I assume, going to look somewhat different for the surrounding pavement?
Yeah.
Just to try and cut off the questions before they happen.
We haven't started the public notice portion of our work yet. This project has been on the budget for a while. It's been undergoing kind of a generation of thought in terms of how best to approach it initially. The plan was to just do a typical stormwater retrofit. The plan was to just do a typical stormwater retrofit in the area. We have a grading problem in the intersection in that it's kind of a raised intersection so the water doesn't pass through easily on all sides to the stormwater systems down on Albany Avenue. So there was initially a thought to regrade and replace some pipes. There's a defective old cast iron pipe that the system relies on. This city engineer, in working with some of the consulting firms that he's been dealing with on alternative methods, came out and looked. We've had several different companies come out and look and they've developed a design. So this has kind of spent a lot of time in the design phase at this point. And it wasn't really until last week that I was even sure that we were going to be moving forward with this project. They do have a design in place now. The city engineer was able to get quotes on the new design. So the next phase would be certainly letting the community know. The work will be taking place largely in the intersection itself. There'll be not much activity along the house fronts. However, there will be contractor equipment parked during the regular work hours. So there will be some impact related to that. It will have a porous pavement, which as I understand it is going to be, instead of the pavers like we're putting on Cleveland Avenue where we're actually putting rectangular sectional pieces together that interlock and have spaces in between. What we're going to try here is a porous pavement, so it'll look very much like asphalt. However, it will have a different, probably reflective nature and a different surface texture than the surrounding intersection. But it won't be quite as noticeable a difference as we'll be seeing on Cleveland Avenue. And part of the reason for that is we want to be able to take a look at each of those different surfaces and see which ones hold up better, which ones have fewer maintenance problems. And also to better understand kind of the care and maintenance that's required in those types of systems. We anticipate that we'll need to do things like vacuuming the system to keep sand and grit out of the porous pavement so that it continues to be able to filter the water through the surface. So it won't have as much of a visual difference as some of the other projects that we've been undertaking. When the construction's going on, because of the excavated nature of, they're going to be digging two feet within the intersection to create the infiltration chamber, that will cut off the ability to travel through that intersection. So once we, if we get the approval of the council to go ahead with this contract, we'll sit down with the contractor and get their planned schedule and then make that available to the neighborhood. And if you think it's best to have a community meeting in addition to circulating a flyer, we can certainly do that and have the engineer in.
I think that might be a good idea. When's the, I know until you sit down with them, you won't know exact schedule, but do you have a sense of when the work would start or when the hope is?
My guess is it would start the beginning of June, so it'll be fairly soon. The idea is to be finished by June 30th, so the intention would be to get started in June and wrap up by the end of the month.
Well, I mean, I commend you on the thinking in new ways and alternative approaches to stormwater management. You've been continuing to do since. Thank you.
Sure.
Would you like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll move the ordinance, second.
Moved by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Snapper. I didn't forget to get that one moved. Any further comment? Any public comment? Of course, please call the roll.
Mayor Wayne?
Aye.
Councilmember Berry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay? Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
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 That passes unanimously. We will now take a short break and we will reconvene at 9:15.
Today we will now move to our budget work session and a discussion of the housing and community development, operating budget and capital items. And we have somebody here with us.
Good evening. I was asked to put together a one pager with bullet points about what we do and as you now can see, I failed miserably at that task. But I do apologize for the length of the attachment that you received through memorandum. The challenge that we have in the community development department is that we cover a really wide range of subject matters and areas of priority that my staff deals with. There are roughly 12 of us on staff right now, many of them are part-time, and they are tasked with a variety of projects. What I've tried to do this evening, or for you when you consider our budget, is to break down some of the activities that we undertake and to identify those specific projects which are unique in the sense that they require consultants to be brought in, that there are capital improvements associated with them, that they're a one-time project, and that they're not an ongoing activity. There are some exceptions to the rule which we can talk about as we go through this, but basically these are the projects or the activities that involve costs above and beyond general operating expenses or staffing costs. What I've also tried to do is to break them down into three general categories, thinking about the issues that were identified during the resident survey and based on some of the observations I've made regarding past conversations you've had here at the council level in terms of sustainability. And while several of these projects could have gone into any category, they are there just for purposes of discussion. Rather than go through each and every one of these things, I thought what I could do, if it's appropriate, is identify one or two projects within each of these general areas of environmental sustainability, economic sustainability, and community sustainability. And then if you have any further questions about something I haven't brought up, I'd be glad to answer those questions for you. Is that approach work? The first category I've identified is environmental sustainability and is basically the preservation of our existing building stock when available to look at appropriate infill development and to look at more of the environmentally, typically environmentally friendly, greenscapes and walkable community types of projects. One of the projects that's a little unique this year is a clean and lean abatement program that we're proposing. One of the challenges that we're finding is that when we come across properties that are in terrible shape and we receive court orders requiring the property owner to tear the property down, they're not in the financial position to do the demolition work and neither are we frankly. So we've included money in the code enforcement's budget for that purpose. Basically, this would take care of anything from, excuse me, I'm running out of air. Take care of everything, anything from boarding up windows to actually tearing down a building. And we have a couple of candidates for that.
Would you give me the one-handed plan or is there something you view as, are there certain properties where we see this kind of specific money, or is it something that is funded, we should have in the budget on an ongoing basis to deal with these types of situations?
A little bit of both. My hope is that after we tear down a couple of buildings, people will take us seriously and they'll take care of it themselves so we won't have to continue to provide that funding. Though it would be something that if, if successful and was felt to be appropriate, could be an on-term expense or a longer-term expense. Right now, I think we have about three buildings that I'd love to tear down.
And how many of them are not in Ward Three?
How many of them are not in Ward Three? None of them are not in Ward Three. They're properties that-
Not in Ward Three, is that what I'm saying?
Go on, Ward Three.
Is the one on Philadelphia one of the ones on the other line?
The one in Philadelphia is a unique property in that it's within a historic district.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the properties that we're looking at are not in the historic district in our-
The one on Sycamore?
That's also in historic district. Those will be interesting. The project that Councilmember Robinson and Councilmember Wright are talking about are what do you do with properties that have been deteriorated to such an extent that there really aren't a lot of easy options for them. And frankly, they're driving the neighborhood crazy and they're in serious violation of property maintenance code. Because the way the county ordinance is situated right now and because of the historic value or the architectural value of both of those properties, they're not good candidates for demolition. And in fact, the ordinance is written in such a fashion that you cannot tear them down. So they have to be restored or renovated.
Yeah, we could have a whole conversation about this, we need to have a whole conversation about this, but not right now. What does happen is my question. They must be rehabilitated, but if the owner's not willing, then why?
And frankly, that's why I have money in the clean and lean slash abatement program. What this would do would give you the ability to, or gives the city the ability to have or would have given the city a pot of money that it could draw from to make those necessary repairs. And then the cost of those repairs that have been ordered by the court would then be placed on a lien against the property. We could go ahead and do that now without specifically dedicating funds for that, but frankly, we're not really in a financial position to do that in terms of the unallocated resources. So this could be a revolving loan, a revolving fund in the sense in that we incur the expense-
Right, and then the lien gets paid back.
The lien gets paid back. But again, that's something that doesn't, there are no sure guarantees in terms of when that will take place.
Right.
So the only commitment first would be if you demolish a house that costs $25,000, you'd only get that one amount of money?
We would place the, typically what we do is we bill the property owner, and then after they've ignored us, we place a lien on the property.
And then that lien, if the property is sold, then that lien becomes part of the price, that lien is like a tax which needs to be paid.
It's like a tax and it needs to be paid regardless of whether the property is for sale or is sold.
And if it's a large enough lien, then foreclosure or tax lien sale can be a step or a foreclosure.
That is a possible outcome depending upon how long, how long they don't pay their property taxes. Or how far, how far delinquent their property taxes are.
And is that, is a large expense, unpaid large expense considered in the same way as taxes not paid? In other words, there can be such a thing as a tax lien sale, is my understanding. And a tax lien sale says if you haven't paid the taxes, we'll just put it up for auction. And so my question is whether property tax, which is what usually kicks off a tax lien sale, is in the same category, or I'll have it reversed, whether a lien for demolition is in the same category as tax, unpaid taxes or unpaid taxes?
I believe it is.
It is? Okay.
Yeah, I believe it is because it just actually gets, it becomes part of the tax liability. So if it's, it would be considered a delinquency as to the best of my knowledge.
Okay.
And just one last question on this. Do you get, do you get paid interest basically for the fact that, you know, you might have invested the $25,000 to demolish the property and then it sounds like it could be years before the issue gets resolved, are they forced to pay interest for the time period under which you?
I don't know the answer to that question. I know in other states, yes, you do get interest and you get life fee penalties and all of that.
Yes, yes, it is applicable in the state too.
You do get, you do get interest as well?
Yes.
Yeah, just as an aside, the property on Sycamore and the property on Philadelphia, we have gone in the past and made court order repairs to both of those properties, placed liens on those properties and I think the most is probably $5,000 and the lien was paid. But my concern is that right now, some of the bigger projects that are coming up, it's expensive to tear a house down, it's a long process too, and then that's why I think it's something that we just can't sort of pay for out of petty cash.
Meanwhile, the houses are deteriorating.
They're scary. And if you're interested, I have pictures of some of them. The other projects that we propose that fall into the category of environmental sustainability would be a design charrette that's tentatively planned for the Washington Adventist Hospital in support of the land use advisor committee. We're looking at doing some community gardens and greening projects. This is a continuation of a program that we've undertaken this year as part of the New Hampshire Avenue Initiative. We have received two applications at this point in time, they were referenced in the SNI last week. One is for the Bright Light Church property on New Hampshire Avenue and the other is with the Hillwood Gardens Neighborhood, no, Hillwood Manor Neighborhood Association.
On the, oops, I just forgot, I just lost it.
Well, I didn't. Okay. On the Washington Adventist-
That's the one I was thinking about.
Are we really setting aside $100,000 for this?
One of the things that has come up in the discussion, whether the timing is appropriate or not, is the possibility of doing a design charrette similar to what was undertaken in New Hampshire Avenue, which would include environmental components, economic development components, as well as land use and things like that. It may be a little bit premature depending upon where the committee is at this point in time, but if that was felt to be appropriate, our experience is that it'll cost you between $80,000 to $100,000 and we've budgeted $100,000. It's not-
I'm kind of surprised at that because it's privately held land and it's not ours. I'm kind of like, we would do a design charrette for the Adventist Hospital? What is that? I'm perplexed.
It's one of the, it's one of the projects that's, has been proposed in terms of furthering the redevelopment of that area in partnership with the community.
It's just a lot of, you know, to me, it's just, just a lot of money, I mean, these other projects, you know, you're spending a lot less and it seems like we're getting a lot more out of them. I mean, I would say you're getting a lot more.
Sounds like a lot of skepticism up here on that.
I'd like to see that on the reconciliation list.
Yeah.
And frankly, the timing, because you're just now appointing people to the land use committee, it may be premature. It's a decision that you'll-
And the hospital is going to be issuing their report in, they told me sort of August, similar around there, you know, and then they're going to shop that around. Yeah, it's both, I think it's both a timing issue and amount for me.
On a smaller scale, in terms of dealing with the walkable aspects of the community, we have in the budget, the ADA accessibility plan. This is one of several programs that's not directly funded out of our budget but is included in the special revenue fund. Those are grant funds that we've secured or community development block grant funds that are available to the city. Essentially that, what this would do is to undertake an inventory and analysis of sidewalks, areas where there are no sidewalks, areas where they could, this existing sidewalk could be improved to make it more accessible to people. And then from there, we would go and sort of evaluate what the priorities were and use that information to direct any funds from the capital improvement program.
Quick question on this. As part of, I know you're kind of going around the city now pretty much every week, is that what you said?
For the target enforcement program, yeah.
Yeah. Do you have folks who take a look at sidewalks that are, you know, obstructed by bushes that are growing into the sidewalk and similar sorts of things? Because there's a fair number of those.
It's one of the things on the list.
It is one of the things.
It's on the right list, yeah.
Should residents contact you if there's problems along those lines?
If you are aware of a situation where the vegetation is overgrown restricting access to the sidewalk, or there are branches there where they're hanging down very low, yes, they should call in and give us the address of the property. What we will do is we'll go out, check it out, if it's a valid complaint or concern, we'll hang a courtesy notice on the door. Because frequently, sometimes it's just a matter of, you know, it's been raining for three weeks and everything's been growing like crazy, I haven't been able to take care of it. We'll do that and then follow up the following week and if the situation remains in place, then we'll issue a notice of violation. And people are given an extended period of time to correct them.
And do you got, well, under this kind of initiative, where you look at getting the, I can think of, the one that comes to mind is there's a telephone pole in the middle of the sidewalk on Flower Avenue and getting around it is pretty challenging even for those of us who are fairly able-bodied. I can't imagine you'd get close to ADA compliance with it.
Those are, those are the types of infrastructure deficiencies that would be identified during this inventory process.
That's good, so it would be.
Right, yeah. But frankly, the ADA, the vegetation would not necessarily be dealt with in the ADA.
I was just wondering if you did it as part of-
And is the, is the code still on the vegetation, anything overhanging within eight feet of the surface?
Sounds right, yeah.
And there's also, there's also particulars about what happens in the distance from an intersection and the height above and all that.
I remember reading it, just forgot what the details are.
Yeah, it's, it's within eight feet hanging over the sidewalk.
If it's an issue in your ward and your constituents have expressed concern about it, please have them contact us. Do not have them trim other people's bushes.
Have them what, I'm sorry?
What if it's an issue in somebody else's ward?
Excuse me?
What if it's an issue within somebody else's ward?
I'm sure they'll let you report it too.
Can I just clarify, I think you might have said this at the beginning, but we got funds specifically to do this project or?
Correct. These are special revenue funds for the community development block grant program. Typically, the block grant program is targeted to low and moderate income individuals or census tract, census block areas that have been identified as being predominantly low and moderate income. Because by definition, folks with disabilities fall into that category, this particular project can be undertaken on a community-wide basis. If it did not have that ADA aspect to it, it would be limited basically towards four, five, and six because of the demographics of those communities.
But it's a thing where we apply to specifically do an ADA project and got the funds specifically for that or?
The city receives a share of the community development block grant funds that are funneled through the county. And two years ago, two and a half years ago, the council at that point in time supported staff's proposals for a number of projects, one of which was the ADA project. Those recommendations were then forwarded to the county which approved them. And then once that contract has been finalized with the county, then we'll be able to undertake this project. So it's a little bit of both, we're not really applying for it, but there is the formal process in terms of evaluating how the funds can be used and where they can be used.
And when does the CDBG allocations for this year, and when do we discuss those?
Usually do that in October.
Thank you.
And can you take a minute and say a couple of words about the Park Avenue parking lot?
The Park Avenue parking lot is last council allocated $25,000 in the capital improvement program to redo a parking lot that had been redesigned and redeveloped as part of the Carroll Avenue streetscape project. Essentially, there is a multifamily residential property that faces Carroll Avenue and because it had multiple access points which created challenges for the traffic as well as for the pedestrians, we went through the process and flipped access to that property to Park Avenue and moved the parking from the front of the yard, the front of the house to the back of the house. The residents on Park Avenue have expressed concern regarding its visual impact and as well as a desire to increase the permeable surface of the area and to screen a variety of things. So the council member at that time asked that $25,000 be included in the capital improvement program. And this is a carryover. We're working with Lardner and Klein in terms of doing the landscaping for that project.
But it was $25, but this is a carryover for $15?
Right, it might be a little higher than that because they're not spinning it down as fast as possible, but the total cost over one or two fiscal years would be $25,000 for that particular property. The parking lot is in place right now already, it was completed with state funds, state grant funds.
The-
The improvements have already been made-
The permeability or the, or the change to the lot itself?
The change to the parking area for that particular property has already been constructed.
So what's left is?
What's being proposed is to tear up everything that was done before and redo it. I received schematics for the proposal from the architect this morning, and if you'd like, I can give you a copy of those for just for information purposes.
Let me just say that I didn't particularly want to spend this money when it was considered the first time and I'd love to put it on the reconciliation list.
I would just say, although I wasn't involved in the whole thing, I have talked to a number of residents over there and, and I, so I'm not going to get into playing referee about who is right and wrong, but there's a very strong feeling about the process which this whole thing went through and what they were told or thought they were told was going to happen, was going to happen versus what actually happened. So I think if we're going to do something different than rectify what they view as was originally promised, then I probably wouldn't be supportive of that. And I think we're going to have a number of constituents who live right there come and talk to you about that, so you just need to be aware of it. And I think, you know, that's why I frequently ask questions, like I had the conversation with Darrell, because I think that's when we get into trouble and we don't do our homework around those things. So I don't know, I'm not going, again, I'm not going to go into the history of who is right or wrong here, but I think perception in some ways is reality and I would advocate for rectifying the procedures.
So does that mean we put it on the reconciliation? I don't even know what the reconciliation is exactly, so.
We kind of get everything at the end and start through and see if there's things we want.
Anything that's debatable.
Change, the change list.
Sarah and I are having a meeting next Thursday, right, this Thursday?
This Thursday.
At 6:30 to go over the plans with the architect and the immediate residents.
So it sounds like on the reconciliation list.
My thoughts.
Couple of questions. The, I'm naive here, I've only been on a few months, but there's a parking, potential parking solution behind some of the businesses on Carroll Avenue at Tacoma Junction. There's a piece of property there which could provide, could be, I think, could be redone to provide public parking and parking is an issue at the junction. On that kind of thing, how does that get into your budget or how do you, how do you go about considering such a thing?
If you could turn to page four.
Oh, good, you already have the answer.
Do you want me to go over it now or do you want me to touch it when I get it back?
Which one is it, the Zero Interest Program?
The Tacoma Old Town Parking Improvements. Ignore the Old Town.
Okay, so we're talking about the back, the area behind? Okay, great. And the other, the other question is, in, oh, I'm jumping, I guess we're still in environmental, aren't we? We're going down, okay, I'm jumping ahead.
I'm easily distracted though, so you can do it.
Distracted?
Let's stick, let's stick with environmental.
I will stick with the program and I'll get to it then, sorry.
Okay.
Anybody else for anything in environmental? I just had one quick question. I see in the rental housing licensing program that you say that program and costs are offset in large part by license fees collected by the city. My assumption is that over time, the costs increase and the fees don't necessarily increase to keep pace and therefore they go a number of years and then when it gets too badly out of whack, then we kind of go, oh gee, maybe we should reconsider that.
That was the way you were doing it until about 2003. So when we went through and redid the, as far as the fees for the licenses concerned, in 2003, when we went through and recodified the housing ordinance, the council approved an automatic escalator clause in the fee schedule. So rather than having to come back to each and every year and say, I need X number of dollars per, it's tied to the capital-
True, that was smart of you.
It was very smart of you, makes my life a lot easier too. So at the first of the year, whatever the capital, consumer price index was for the prior year is what has been applied. And it usually goes up four or five dollars at the most on a per-unit basis. The one thing that we, that you should be aware of is that while your fees are going up two, three, four, five percent, the number of rental properties that are being licensed are dropping. And we contract with the county for the inspection services. We have a two-year contract with them, I think we've renewed it once, so we're up for another one in two years, a year and a half. Those costs don't necessarily, aren't necessarily tied to the CPI. So at some point in time, there may be, the revenues may not cover as much of the cost of the contract with the county. I'm not encouraging you to stop contracting to the county, they do an excellent job, but it's something to take into consideration.
When you say the number of apartments that are being inspected, is that because people are going underground with their apartments and not having them inspected and doing, still renting legally, or is it because there's some other demographic shift in the city?
Condo conversion?
It's the number of licensed, or the number of rental units that are being licensed has been dropping. We get, for every multifamily property we get that goes offline because it's being converted or the property owner is combining units so they have a bigger place for themselves to live or- for themselves to live, or Hampshire Tower is sold and goes condominium. I mean, that's 250 units right there.
But it's that as opposed to the, as the fees go up, people are saying, oh, I'm going to do this below?
We get a lot of that, too, but it's, that's not the primary reason.
Okay. I have heard about units that are not licensed anymore and should be and stuff like that.
We accept anonymous complaints.
You accept anonymous complaints?
Yeah.
It's hard to get, it's hard to get them to complain is the problem.
Or what? If, if anyone is concerned about a property that's being rented within their neighborhood and they're, would like to know whether or not it's licensed, they can call and we can let them know. And if they're concerned about it because of additional cars that are in the area, or it looks like it's an unsafe situation, or there may be overcrowding, we can investigate and do that. We've had, we get leads, if you will, from a variety of places, Craigslist, the notice board, and the website, a variety of things. Frankly, we don't have the staff capacity to go out and aggressively identify unlicensed rental properties, but we do follow through and we get reports of a property that may not be licensed or illegal.
And how do you, and you said you found the code enforcement working pretty well?
They're wonderful.
I continuously hear from landlords about issues, I guess I would call it, things like you get inspector one comes out and gives you 10 things to fix, you fix those, and now inspector two comes out and has a whole different list of things to fix. And so it's like never-ending. I do hear the satisfaction with.
It's when you, when you inspect a property, it's just a snapshot of that building at that particular moment, at that particular second. And when you come back, those things maybe have been resolved, but then something else has happened in the interim. And the county tries very hard not to just torture people by dragging up the inspection process on, on, on an ending basis. But there are some things that come up that you notice that you just have to include on the notification or the violation notice.
It's just, I did, years ago, I did health inspections, and we found it worked better if you have the same inspector, redo the re-inspection to avoid the kind of endless cycle to it.
Right. They do that generally, though with many of the departments at the county level. A lot of their staff is being pulled into the permitting services division, so a lot of the housing code inspectors are being offered transfers for higher salaries. So then they've got a bunch of vacancies. And while those positions have not been frozen in the budget process, it still takes some time to get those positions filled. So they're looking at ways to increase the retention of their existing inspectors. But typically, once an inspector is from assigned to a property, that, that's their baby until it's closed down.
And do we do annual inspections? How often are the inspections?
They do the inspections on an annual basis. Unless it's a biannual license.
Is that every apartment?
Yes, it's supposed to be.
I have a constituent who, for two years, had upgrades to his accessory apartment that were in excess, cost in excess of the full year's income from that accessory apartment. And then now, a third year, he got another some hundreds of dollars of upgrades and upgrades, and is very upset. I don't know what his, what recourse he has. Sounds like, from what I, from what I hear, there's not a lot of recourse. Can you appeal?
Could appeal it internally with the code enforcement division. They have a team, project team leader for Tacoma Park, and then they have a supervisor that oversees the entire division.
Okay.
As an accessory apartment, it's not subject to rent stabilization, so they could increase their rents to cover the additional cost.
Could. He doesn't want to, and he doesn't feel it would be fair to his tenant. And I did have one thing that is under environmental sustainability, and that's the $142,000 on educational programming for keeping, what is it, encouraging students and their parents to safely walk and bike to and from school. Could you give a little explanation on what that $142,000 is for?
The, these funds are awarded through the State of Maryland State Highway Administration through, as a result of a federal effort that's targeted to increase the number of kids that walk and bike safely to school. The educational programming costs include staffing costs, publication costs, the cost of contracting with vendors to do bike rodeos, to organize trail cleanups, to do similar workshops or festivals like we did with a couple of weeks ago out here in the back lot. Also to do the Walk to School Day that was held this fall, that was well participation, or a lot of good participation in that. It's everything from a newsletter that we're doing on a, twice a year, that goes out to all the school-aged children and their parents in Tacoma Park, as well as incentives, bicycle helmets, things like that. The bulk of it is staffing and then consultant fees for some of the rodeos and other programming.
But you said that none of that is coming from our budget?
None of this is from your budget.
I'm shocked as a United States or Maryland taxpayer, then.
Well, actually, the number is high because it's, it's an overlap of a couple of grant awards. It's a new program for the state, so they're kind of sort of figuring it all out. As a result, year one and year two sort of seriously overlap, so typically, it would not be that high.
Yeah, I'm shocked. Do we have to use it for, that's the specific purpose for educational programming, or could we?
Yes, they approve our budget. They, that's part of the application. Couple of weeks ago, you approved an application for round three, and it was fairly evenly divided between capital improvements as well as educational programming. This $142,000 also includes a sidewalk survey that we're going to marry with the ADA accessibility plan, so that get bigger bag for a dollar as far as doing a complete inventory of the entire.
I see.
And Councilmember Siemens has a follow-up question. And if I can just remind us that we've gotten through one section of this, and there's like three more to go, and we've already spent more time than we were going to spend on the whole thing, so go ahead.
Time well spent. I, yeah, back on the inspections that Councilmember Snipper brought up. As a landlord and owner of a rental property, I have a perspective on the inspections provided by the county that I'm glad I have. It gives me much greater insight than I get from sitting up here. I really think the county does an excellent job with the inspections. And tell you that the same inspector has come for the last two years and also does the re-inspection. And it's been very good. That doesn't say that I was violation-free. They always are very helpful in finding some things that have to be changed or upgraded when they do the inspections. I am on this same note, and I don't think there's much, I'm not sure there's much the city can do, but as a Montgomery County taxpayer, I find it kind of disconcerting that different inspectors come in throughout the year from different departments within the county to inspect for, for different reasons. They're all doing housing inspections, but there's, you know, the rental property inspection that goes on, and then there's HOC does a separate inspection. And there, there's a whole lot of overlap, but that's a tangent from tonight's discussion.
Yeah, they're all county, but they're different agencies and different rules.
They're different agencies, and there's an awful lot of overlap in what they're looking at. But they, they do, they do all fine things. They get repaired, and they're happy with that. I find it very, very difficult to do my job with this list because I've heard several councilmembers say, question something like the, the one that Councilmember Robinson just brought up with the educational programming for safe routes to school. And you say, oh, well, that's a grant, we don't have to, you know, it's not really our money. But it's a budget decision I'm being asked to make. I don't know which ones I get to pick and, you know, which ones do affect us or not. It would be very helpful if this list said that this money is coming, you know, if, if we eliminate this project, it would eliminate the revenues, or, or that if you chose not to do this, you could redirect the money to another project.
If, on the word, under each item, we have proposed FY09 budget, and then the dollar amount dash. If the phrase after the dollar amount is special revenue fund, those are grant dollars that were applied for with the authorization of the city council and are basically earmarked specifically for that project and cannot be reprogrammed. Everything else you can.
CDBG is community development, then?
Right. And that falls, no, that's a special revenue fund. So everything that is identified as a special revenue fund has been previously approved and is incorporated here because it's part of the budget, but it cannot, it cannot really be reprogrammed without actually giving it back to the entity that gave it to them.
The CDBG money might be able to, but the, but the others couldn't.
Different process.
It's a different process, and there's a contractual agreement with the county which can be amended.
Except they crack down on that, and it's a lot harder to amend.
There, yeah.
All right. Well, you just made my job up here easier. Thank you.
Yeah. So anytime you see community development, code enforcement, capital improvement program, landlord tenant, that side of thing, that money you can play with or reprogram.
And that is not money that this council can de-allocate. It's grant money we could turn back, the special revenue.
Special revenue fund has, there are no City of Tacoma Park dollars in that, for that project.
So there's no, there's no matching dollars even in any of those?
Not for any of these.
Just as an aside, there are matches for program open space projects. We talked about that a couple of months ago. Some of the police grants sometimes have matches.
Okay. In the interest of time tonight, then, I would suggest that we skip over the special revenue funds unless it's a project that we really feel strongly we don't want done.
And as, as you proceed with this, Sarah, thank you for providing this format. It was very helpful to see all of the various projects.
Yeah.
And we haven't seen it in this format before. I like it.
Thank you. It's just really hard to present our budget so it makes sense to me.
Yeah, that's why we like.
And I'm not sure it makes sense to me.
Can I have a second there?
Second, okay. So if you want to just talk about the things that you could, on page three, the Safe Roadways Committee, there's $10,000 in the community development budget for initiatives that are identified and developed under the auspices of that committee that are targeted for increasing pedestrian safety and promoting alternative means of travel. Historically, they focused on buses. And this year, and I believe next year, they're looking at ways of increasing the use of the city roadways for bicycle.
And is that $10,000 something we have budgeted in the past and typically budgeted every year?
This would be the third year. Yeah. The other one is on page four, miscellaneous quarter enhancements. This is $5,500 for odds and ends along New Hampshire Avenue, additional trash containers and recycling containers, benches, things like that. In the Old Tacoma Business Association, there's $30,000 that has been earmarked for that organization for operating support on page.
Which we just recently did.
Which you just did. And we'll include a reconciliation with the city manager because the number that was actually in the budget is 25, but you have heard 30.
Before you leave, economic sustainability. In the first paragraph, you have projects designed to promote the shop local movement. I urge you to consider fair trade as well. I've talked to a couple of businesses, and some citizens would be interested in moving in that direction. There's actually a fair trade city thing. That's kind of farther down the road, but, but a number of merchants already sell fair trade products and would be interested in a little bit of publicity about the fact that they do, and so on. The city could work with them on it.
Sorry, I'm just backing up on page three with, again, this is part of the New Hampshire Avenue quarter. Much of the New Hampshire initiatives that we're undertaking along New Hampshire Avenue are funded with grant dollars, though there are odds and ends that are not. Marketing and promotions is part of the shop local effort to increase people's awareness of what the possibilities are for New Hampshire Avenue. Doing some additional branding, identifying a webs, or pulling together a website that we're wrapping up right now that will be used to promote the area for development company or development firms that have expressed an interest in relocating to the area, as well as folks like you and I who want to know how to get the most different kinds of rentals and where to go. So that's part of the, the marketing and promotions effort that we have under, proposed for New Hampshire Avenue. Frankly, it's a continuation of what we're already doing. We have an additional, I did talk about that already?
And anything you can do to use the phrase shop locally rather than shop local?
I know that bothers you.
Will prevent my reaction of like fingernails on a blackboard.
Yeah, same here.
I understand that. But when you go to their website, shop local. I know, I know.
Do a physical impossibility with their website.
On page five, one of the larger things that we have set aside, pots of money that we've set aside for furthering economic sustainability is named for commercial center improvements. This would be the second year that we funded this. These are small enhancement projects that are undertaken throughout the community and can range from benches and banners to landscaping. Projects like that that have been identified by the residents as priorities for them, and they're in design to make the area more attractive, to make it safer, to encourage people to use those commercial resources that are there, as well as to sort of make it more a part of the neighborhood.
I did see some of those efforts, and one of the things that concerned me is that there wasn't enough attention to using some green technology. So there were benches and so on that could have been made out of recycled materials that weren't. And there's, I think the city needs to sort of take a second look at some of these things.
It's on the, the list of things that are supposed to be considered when projects are going through and identifying it?
Okay.
The gateway signage is also something that's directly funded with city dollars and it's in their capital improvement program. This would be phase two. This would be essentially filling in the gaps from those areas that we were unable to include in the first phase. So in Ward one, for example, it would be the, the balance of the signage for the historic district that's not necessarily the border for the city. There's additional signage for Sligo Creek Trail, or Sligo Creek, the northern branch, watershed area, things like that that the community has identified as things that are important to them to identify for the rest of the community residents.
On signage, we chatted briefly about the, those little small signs that you have facing out to the street.
Uh huh.
And you actually had the crew come and put a different post in, better-looking post, but still a pretty cheesy-looking post. And it's still facing out into the street so that you don't even know it's a sign when you drive by unless you happen to glance at the sign.
Okay. I'll talk to them about that again. And those are some of the things that frankly, we're not going to be able to pick up until the second phase because what you and I chatted about would have been called, would require an additional sign that would, so yes, there are the odds and ends like that that need to be addressed in the, in phase two, which is what's been proposed, as well as additional signage for parks, recreation trails, other city buildings, filling in the gaps on the tertiary signs that.
I was just referring to the existing signs.
I know. I'll talk to David about it again. He may have misunderstood me. But yeah.
This is about a special revenue fund, but I think it's a follow-up to.
This is about a special revenue fund, but I think it's a follow-up to a question that Councilmember Robinson was starting to ask, which is around on page four, the Old Tacoma Old Town parking improvements. I think, Dan, you were asking about in the junction, the spaces behind where Heritage is and Bikram Yoga, and there seems to be an underutilized lot there in terms of how it's laid out and the parking spaces are set up now and if, and the owner, I think, who owns a lot of those properties owns the lot, but it's not actually available to everybody to use because he puts restrictions on it based on whether shopkeepers pay a rent. So I think you were talking about figuring out a way to consolidate that and make it into public parking as opposed to this is, I think, just a loan program to repay parking lots, right?
That is correct. Did you understand me in trying to say what Josh just said?
I did and I thought I answered the question, but obviously not. We don't have money, we don't have sufficient funds to buy property and convert it in private properties, private parking lots into public parking lots. What we have attempted to do with the parking improvement loan fund is to provide zero interest loan dollars available to private property owners to make improvements to their parking lot, be it through additional signage, redesign, paving, demolition, et cetera. And in exchange for those improvements at that zero interest rate, they are, would be required to make that lot accessible to others in the area, so other customers parking. So it's sort of a, we'll do this for you, but in exchange for that, you have to provide, you have to support this public benefit. It's a condition of accessing those funds.
I understand. I've just been through that when building my little office building and it was excruciating at times and a lot of times I wish I just hadn't done that process at all. And I know that the owner of that lot would rather just sell the lot to the city and let the city maintain it. So I think that's what Josh is talking about in this case. And so I wonder, and so I'll go back to my initial question. If that's what the owner wants, how do you find out about it and how do you put that in your own plan to put aside money so that that can take place?
Typically, those are projects that staff identifies and we go through and do that. Given land costs in the immediate area and the other priorities of the council, we have not budgeted any money for land acquisition.
Okay, so that's something that we should talk about.
That's something that as a council that you could identify as being something that was a priority for you and that you would like to allocate resources for.
I think that goes back to creating a parking authority because one way we might pay with it is meter the spaces and-
The parking authority would pay for the debt. You'd have to incur a debt-
Right.
To acquire it and it would pay for the debt service.
And where are we on a parking authority, which has been spoken of for a couple of years among part, some of us on the council and I know with, with you and your staff? Do, have, is there a, is there something in here which addresses that need, at least perceived need on our part?
No.
Okay, have, have you considered it?
We have talked about it at the staff level, but, and it's made the to-do list, but it's not, it has not made the done list yet.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just point out that that is something that has great support among merchants and business owners and the business association all along Carroll Avenue and I believe in other places too. So I'd encourage you to take that seriously. There was an inventory done of parking, as you know, a couple of years ago. There were discussions with the county, with Park and Planning and DPS and others. There were questions asked about whether it was feasible. We heard back a couple of times differing opinions, but in essence that it is feasible on a smaller scale. So I'd personally like to see that, see that reflected in some way or another.
But that's probably a staff time issue as opposed to the capital.
It's a staffing issue as opposed to expense.
Yeah, and I've heard from residents, particularly Ward five, who end up driving, can't really walk toward, to downtown, so parking is a, is a big concern. So I'm thoroughly in support of staff taking a look at this and coming up with a proposal in the next year or so at some point for us to consider.
I'd like to propose, I mean, an additional expenditure item that in a sense embraces both your program and communications, which is on the agenda for Thursday. I'll be in Chicago, so I won't be able to make this proposal that evening, but one theme that seems to be cohering over the last several weeks is the need to, you know, promote the city as an economic development or venue or as a place to attract businesses. Corridor, Old Town, to support the businesses in Old Town and generate more traffic for them. Another one would be, you know, the farmers markets and the need to assist them. And another would be just sort of the general festivals that we have. I mean, my own feeling after being at the farmer's market on Sunday and talking to a couple of local real estate people is that the, the brand of Tacoma Park may not be as strong as it should be in order to do all these kinds of things. There's a lot of properties on the market today. Many of them are taking a long time to sell and according to the real estate people, the value, you know, has dropped considerably over a year or so ago. That doesn't have everything to do with the image of the city, but certainly the image, the stronger the image is, the likelihood of the, the strength of the housing market is to some degree reflected in that. So what I'd like to propose with a particular emphasis on the, on the development and redevelopment and the attracting of investors into the community, the kinds that we want to see to make investments that we'd like to have, I would like to see between 30 and $50,000 invested in a professional PR firm. We don't have such a person as part of the city staff at this time. I think it, it would be helpful to have for the reasons that I've specified and more. I'd, I'd be reluctant to propose a full-time staff person because of the responsibilities and the liabilities involved in taking that on, but I, I think a contractor carefully selected and carefully focused could have a major impact on some of the things that we're, that we want to do, but maybe we're not doing so well now. And again, part of it is, is because, you know, your staff has a full plate, you have a full plate, though promotion of these, you know, economic development initiatives falls within your area, it's, it's hard for the planners and the others to do that, plus all the other things they have to do. So I would propose for the city manager's consideration for yours and for my colleagues that we, we kick that idea around and see if, if we can, you know, develop a consensus or not around, you know, adding the function, though not necessarily the full-time person.
So that sounds like a good item for the reconciliation list too, and I would also like to, to add the gateway signage in case that hasn't previously been added.
As a-
Reconciliation.
As a deduct reconciliation item, yes, to help fund Councilmember Barry's suggestion. Okay, if I can just point out to my colleagues, this has been a good discussion, but if we continue at this pace, we will be another 45 minutes on this, so.
Quickly, other items that are actually city dollars are the affordable housing programming. We have $125,000 set aside for that. That was the total of two funds that were designated from the proceeds of the sale of real estate. I've also included in here the rent cost of doing rent stabilization. They're above and beyond our legal fees as well as staffing costs. And then the landlord certification seminar, which is a requirement by ordinance. Other housing-related or empowerment types of expenses that are directly out of the city's tax revenues.
Sarah, did you skip over the, starting with the tenant capacity on page five?
Yes, I did. We also have a continuation of the capacity building initiative that's been successful, particularly working with tenants associations in wards one or four, five and six. We have $35,000 set aside for that. We're doing an outreach project right now in wards five and six, I believe, up on Lockme Avenue. Again, part of that's in response to the results of the resident survey in terms of the lack of engagement, the lack of belonging for the residents in those particular wards. And along those same lines, we've got community outreach in terms of various neighborhood association meetings and other community meetings that frankly, all three of the divisions do. We have the Survival Guide, which is developed in partnership with Cooperative Nursery School on Flower Avenue. We have other funds set aside out of the capital budget for the Arts and Humanities. 5,000 of that is in your, is an operating expense out of 9,000.
It's, it's actually 7,000.
7,000. And then 10,000 for public, public art.
Can I just ask a quick question about the Survival Guide? Do we know how much revenue, it says excess revenue is retained by the school? Do we have any sense of how much the school makes off of?
No, no, I don't.
I think that might be a question, given that we subsidize it at $8,500, we might want to just find out what that subsidy produces.
Pardon?
It would be useful information to know, but one of the, one of the kind of partnership aspects of it is that they hand deliver it to the units around the city, so it saves us other kinds of distribution costs. So that'd be, they get their revenue from the ad sales, but as part of their fundraising for their cooperative nursery school, the parents go out and do the, like work.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying, I mentioned this in my council comments, I just want to know more about it. I appreciate the Survival Guide and wouldn't necessarily say we should put this on reconciliation, but I would want to understand sort of all those things.
Right, and that's, I just wanted to mention that that's where it came about, is that they approached us as a, as a way to be a partner with the city.
By the way, Sarah, I very much appreciate how quickly you responded to the, the direction given by the survey with the special focus on those areas of the city that did feel that they were, that they were not a part of things or had, had complained about quality of life issues. I see throughout your presentation, many of the things that you are proposing do focus on those concerns and I think it's admirable and thank you very much.
And if I can just point out on the DPCNS, on the Survival Guide, that Councilmember Snipper and I were at their event this weekend and one of the things that came up was that they're looking to expand or move and one possible move is out of the city, even though they've been here since the 40s. So that may, that may impact.
We have spoken to them on several occasions about various possibilities within Tacoma Park.
Keep talking.
Yes.
Yeah, I know, it would be a nice thing to have.
Because they're, they're pursuing something right now that would take them just outside the city.
I would find it helpful on the tenant capacity building initiative on deciding whether we continue this for another year, to get a report from them on their activities for the year, what their successes have been and what we've realized for the investment over the past year.
What type of information would you like included in that?
What organizations they have helped to build, what tenant organizations they have built that, that are sustaining themselves at this point, what assistance they gave for the tenant purchase, any other accomplishments that they've had during the year.
Some, some of that's in the weekly.
Some of it's in the SNI, it's also in the quarterly reports that we give. We can consolidate that.
Would be helpful.
Just as a FYI, I had asked Linda to tally the amount of funds that were set aside for the capacity program since it was initiated. And right now, based on the dollars that we spend and the people that we have an impact on, we're spending about $10 a house, $10, $10 a contact. So for, in 2007, and this is a calendar year, we expended roughly $35,000 on the capacity building program and that had an impact on 3,400 households, which was the cost of about $10 a household. So from a cost-effective standpoint, it's difficult to sort of gauge successes based on, okay, we had this many tenant associations, we had this many condo conversions where the tenants decided to proceed with it. Because frankly-
Well, how do we-
The outcome isn't necessarily the-
How do we measure?
Well, and that's one of the challenges in terms of helping the tenants go through and make that decision on their own as far as whether or not they decide to go ahead and buy the property or make the decision that it's not something that's a good fit for them. And we've had a number of properties where that, that was the decision that was made was, okay, we have all this information, you've given us the developers to work with, you've helped us find a pro bono attorney and, you know, we don't want to do it.
Right, but it might be helpful to know then how many tenants did move to an ownership position in, in their units when they went to condominiums. You know, if those are the, the things that the capacity builders have been working on, it might be interesting, interested, interesting to see how much per of those success stories that they are costing.
And it, and we'll be glad to pull that together. It's also not just the condominium conversions, things like-
How many COLDA hearings, does that increase since we've been using the capacity building?
No, it's actually, we're mediating most of the complaints before they get to COLDA.
And is that the capacity builders that are doing it?
It's a little bit of everybody, yeah.
But a good measure of how good a job they're doing capacity building, because I did some of this type of organizing in Harlem, is how many tenant associations gets established, how many have truly elected officers, how often do they meet all those are very effective ways to measure, are they building tenant capacity? Can I, just before, just on rent stabilization?
Yes.
I think this is more an issue, I guess, at large is just, I think we should have an estimate of two things related to rent stabilization. One is the, the, what we're spending on it in terms of property tax we're not collecting and then what is the, the, the total subsidy we're really giving people. And I think we should do that really because it is a huge expenditure that we commit to affordable housing and we should be able to articulate it and, and document it and be proud of that and also potentially use it in conversations with the county because that's the way, main way we provide affordable housing. The county doesn't rebate us in any way for it. They're probably unlikely to, but I think it's a good, a good, both those numbers would be good numbers for us to have in our pocket and sort of know.
In 2007, it was about $600 per rent stabilized rent facility.
That's the subsidy.
That's what it costs you to provide that program. The, the cost in terms of lost property tax revenue? We have an old study that was done by University of Maryland. I was contacted last week by one of the graduate students. They are in the process of updating that analysis in anticipation of the county continuing its discussion of rent stabilization on a countywide level. So I can give you old data, I can't give you new data yet, though they've indicated that they would give us a copy of the report.
We should put that in the budget in the, in the comments. I know it's not going to end up as a dollar line item in the revenue expenses, but I think it should be in that summary page. It should be a comment that we-
Is that project-
-for about the subsidy and the cost.
Is that project with the University of Maryland a funded project for them?
The update?
The, the original study or the update?
Original study was done through their public policy and it was based on, it was privately funded. The, the update, I don't know. I believe it was just an internal decision to update the information that was gathered to make those analysis and they're plugging in new numbers.
Who funded the original project?
It was my understanding it was Southern Management.
Yeah, I'm not-
Thank you.
I think so, but I'm not positive. I think they serve on their, it was one of their board members or one of their advisory board members?
Right, I, I think it was funded by Southern Management, which doesn't give me a feeling it was- I think it was funded by Southern Management, which doesn't give me a feeling it was necessarily an unbiased report.
I don't remember the name of it.
So I'm reluctant to have it used as documentation of anything.
For those of you who are interested in seeing it, it's available on the website.
I agree. I wasn't saying we shouldn't actually use that number, but I think we should come up with some way to estimate both those, the subsidy and the cost of it. Sarah, the $35,000 on the, on the online rent reporting system, is that for staff to check what rents are in the different buildings?
Ideally, what we'd like to do is provide an opportunity for the landlords to submit their rent reports online. Right now, they do it all by paper, and then all of that information is manually entered in by staff, which takes months, and as well as monitoring it. By doing it online, what that would give us is the ability to be more proactive in terms of investigating possible discrepancies between what is being charged, what is being reported, and what's actually legal. So it frees up some staff time and streamline that process, and allow us to advocate on behalf of tenants that may not be in a position or uncomfortable filing a complaint because they're being charged rents that are excessively high.
Great. Is that, is the software, is that custom that you'd contract, or is that available? Custom you'd contract?
We've talked to someone, and we'll be issuing requests for proposals in the near future.
Okay.
Actually, this week, I'm hoping. Other programming varies from educational programming for everything from property, homeownership, fear housing, foreclosure prevention. And then the balance of the, that are included in your list are tied towards individual assistance and support in emergency, emergency situations. Most of the fund programs are funded through the Special Revenue Fund. There are a couple that are not. One is the Tenant Assistance Program at the bottom of page seven. Essentially, we use those dollars to pay for temporary storage of people that have been put out on the curb and they've been evicted. And then the Emergency Assistance Program, which is managed by the Seventh-day Adventist Community Services Group, is funded through this, by the city, but primarily, totally through donations.
We actually solicit the private donations?
Yes. We do that through the newsletter, we do it through a mailing that goes out to every household for the...
Stormwater bills.
Stormwater bills.
I would like to see us maybe add some of our own money into that, because that is a valuable service that is, that's underfunded or overutilized, depending on how you look at it, and of great value to city residents. Maybe we could just add it to the list and talk about it later?
Well, along those same lines, there are, there, if you note, there are several different programs that sort of serve that purpose. They're all tied towards Tacoma Park residents, and they all have a sort of a different little spin in terms of what their focus is on. So the Emergency Assistance Program that is funded with donations is not the only option that folks have at this point in time, in terms of providing medical emergencies, addressing housing concerns, evictions, things like that.
If I can just add that the county provides funds for these types of services?
They do, but as Mr. Stevens has indicated, it's getting tight, and the demand is really growing tremendously. Because I have this information available, last year, in 2007, 32 households were benefited through that program. The prior year, it was 12. So there's an increasing demand. I'm not sure what it'll be for 2008.
Josh, had you, had you asked that the public art installation be put on the reconciliation list as well? I have in my council comments, yes. Is that something we need to note? I sent that, the same information to Barb, and also, I think, she probably, if she's keeping, if that goes back to reconciliation, I think that we should probably have it.
I'm sorry, Sarah, could you give me those numbers again, please, on numbers served by the emergency assistance? 12 and 32.
Thank you. Just as a comment regarding the public art, that was one of the things that came through in the resident survey, too, is the fact that people appreciate the access they have to cultural and artistic activities, and that they were asking for more. The public art project is an offshoot of the recommendations that were developed during the cultural plan that was adopted by the city council a couple of years ago. And it's just a continuation of that programming, that policy that has been established.
Josh? I have one question, one quick comment. Who, is your department responsible for the wonderful art exhibits that we've had in the community center?
Yes. That's through the Arts and Humanities Commission, and part of the funding for the public art line item there, that's what that does. It also, well, actually, there are two different things. There's public art, physical things that are permanent for $10,000, and then the $7,000 provides the monthly poetry reading, the poetry classes that we're, workshops that we're offering free now, all of the exhibit stuff, the holiday art sale and open studio tour, Arts and Humanities Day. We're doing an anthology of poetry that was part of a previous exhibit, and bringing in some panel art, which is art that is created, sort of folk art that's been developed in prisons. So things like that, that's where those dollars go for. And frankly, we've gotten a lot of really very positive comments about those small projects and a lot of enthusiasm for the larger project that was recently developed.
Right. I just want to be, I want to be clear, the thing that I thought should go on the reconciliation was not the $7,000 for all those smaller ongoing activities, but was for this specific public art installation. That's the thing I should, I think that should go on the reconciliation. But who, do you do all this coordinating with the...
I do it all.
Okay. That's been great. And just my comment is, I'm sure you feel sort of pulled, and there's lots of different questions. I think that's, from my perspective, more a reflection of the importance of the work your department does.
It is.
And the many priorities and things that we want to have happen, I think many of them end up falling, falling into areas that you're responsible for, so I...
As a pitch for my staff, I have a wonderful staff. They are all very dedicated, hardworking, and I have to shoot them out of the building at night. And they do a good job, and they really take pride in their work.
And we appreciate their work.
I do, too. It's kind of fun.
And if I can just say that, maybe when I'm meeting with the city manager tomorrow about agenda and such, one thing I may want to discuss with her is how we'll deal with our reconciliation list this year, since I would say it's a greatly expanded list from the usual reconciliation list, and we may want to come up with a suggestion or two about how we go about that and let you all know that, because it's, I can see this reconciliation list shaping up to be two weeks worth of discussion. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
And the final item is the city manager's quarterly financial report.
I think the report is fairly detailed, so given the lateness of the hour, I'd just like to see if there's any questions from the council.
I would just say, I have to be honest and candid to say I didn't get a chance to read through the whole report, so I will do that. But I was wondering if there's anything at a very high level that you thought was, you particularly call our attention to.
The timing of this sort of, actually, is a little bit odd, because it obviously follows the revenue projections already being given to the council, so probably the, one or two things that would probably be worth noting, I think when we did the report in the, for the second quarter, we were unclear at that time whether the lag in highway user revenues was actually a lag that was going to continue through the year, or if it was just indicative of some kind of timing difference in when money was received. And we had noted that in the report. At this point, based on kind of our own projections and information we got from S.H.A., it truly is a lag. We're not going to be, I don't think, Brooks can correct me if she disagrees, but based on the data that we had, I don't think that source is going to, is going to meet budgeted projections. Similarly, you know, I did note that income taxes were up compared to last year. That's sort of the good news part, but if you actually look at the revenue projections contained in the budget document, we are not expecting income tax receipts to meet budget. In fact, we project to fall short by about $50,000, which is sort of indicative of the trend we've been talking about, where we're not quite seeing the growth in income taxes that, that we've seen in recent years, which is part of the reason why the budget's a little bit more fiscally constrained. Other than that, I think, Yvonne, is there anything that I missed worth noting from your perspective?
I don't see...
Yeah. Those are some of the highlights with revenues. Most of the expenditure projections are pretty much tracking what we, where we thought they would, so we'll just continue to watch revenues as we get through the last couple months of the fiscal year.
On police overtime, Barb, is there a cap that is placed on that? Obviously, with the department at full strength now, there is both a dependency, or both a tendency to have, you know, adequate officers to cover some of these things, but also more officers to, to deploy on an overtime basis, particularly when there's a serious crime problem in the city.
It's a good question, Councilmember Barry, and it's actually something that I talked to the chief about during my individual budget meetings. Looking back through the historical data, overtime's sort of been all over the place, depending on what was happening, because the department was getting close to full strength. I did have some discussions with the chief about whether that should be kind of cut back a little bit. I think the year before, I think we were actually spending close to $140-some thousand, I believe, what he had put in his budget request. I'm going off memory here and focusing on the patrol division, what they think about Because he is up to full strength, there was a question in my mind whether it needed to stay at that level, but I think there were two factors that sort of came into play. One, the salaries will, will be going up, so you're not getting quite as much overtime, if you will, for your buck. But beyond that, we have used overtime details, I think some of the council may recall, a year or so ago, how we were getting particularly hard hit by commercial robberies in many segments of the city, and so we were running some special overtime details. So I think kind of weighing those factors, I left it the same.
Okay. Any more questions? If I can just remind those of us who will be left standing Thursday night, we have a budget work session considering IT, communications, community center fund, and non-departmental, and it sounds like three of us will be out of town. Therefore, the remaining four...
I think Councilmember Clay is back, I believe.
I remember the 16th is the return date, so there will be, there should be three of us out of town, so.
So that puts me in control, then. If I don't show up, there's no meaning.
No, because it's a work session, we do it anyway.
Oh, okay.
So we're adjourned.
So much for my control.